Our Planning Commission meeting of June 2, 2010, would you please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? TV coverage announcement and roll call, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Lompoc, San Andres Valley, San Maria and Orchid areas. Free broadcasts of Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV, Channel 20. Now for the roll call. Commissioner Brooks?
Here.
Commissioner Coney?
Here.
Commissioner Valencia?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Blau is currently absent but will be joining us a little bit later.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Ms. Black, agenda status report.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, good morning. Commissioner Blau is actually going to be attending the hearing in the Santa Maria Hearing Room remotely, so he should be with us about 10 o'clock, I suspect. In terms of your agenda today, we have five items for consideration of the Commission, and we're ready to move forward on all five of those items.
Okay.
And for the projection report. Okay. So, Madam Chair, we're proposing, I think we already did cancel the June 9 hearing. We are also proposing that the Commission cancel the June 16 hearing. We don't have any items to be heard that day. And then we will be conducting a hearing on June 30. It's a special Fifth Wednesday to conduct some business up in the Santa Maria area. We have a fairly full agenda for June 30. We have one item on July 7, and we'll be monitoring that to see if we indeed want to conduct a hearing on July 7 or not. We had projected the Los Alamos Community Plan to be considered on July 14. And what I'd like to do is hand a decision on that until Commissioner Blau is with us. Maybe we can just trail this to the end of the hearing today to discuss that because it does indicate that he will be absent that day. And if Commissioner Blau wants to participate in that hearing, then we'll have to find another day. So far, we've not been able to secure a day in July where we can have a hearing with all the Commissioners present in Santa Maria because the hearing room's not available or our staff is not available. So we may be looking at August if indeed Commissioner Blau wishes to participate in that and still plans on being out of town. And other than that, we do have the Orchid Community Plan projected further on into October, and we'll just continue to monitor your agendas and let you know when we need to conduct hearings and when we don't.
Okay, thank you. Any, Commissioner, have any questions, comments concerning the projected projection report? No? Okay. Then we'll move on to public comment, and this is the time for, that is set aside for public testimony on items not on today's agenda. And I see that we have Mr. Thorndike. Welcome.
It's a very welcome sight to see you all here.
Good, thank you. Nice to see you, too.
I was listening to the TV, and I was taking a bath this morning, and I, simultaneously, that is, and I'm watching. And you people have a booth, and it's, the program was for Earth Day, and I didn't realize the situation. I didn't know you'd be here. I'm going to read you a letter I received from the county here, and then we'll go from there. This letter is in response to your question, Mr. Thorndike, about whether the County of Santa Barbara can accommodate a request for a change in zoning of the property you own in Tora Canyon without a change to the California Subdivision MAP Act or without your property meeting the legal requirement of the Subdivision MAP Act. As explained in considerable detail in the letter you received from the County Council dated May 9, 2005, copy attached, and I've had two cents, regrettably, the short answer is no. Compliance with the Subdivision MAP Act is required for any parcel to be considered legal, to be sold, to be leased or financed. Is also necessary to be granted any level of land use or building permit. As indicated in the attached letter from County Council, there is no available documentation or indication that your property is in compliance with the SMA. Now, I'm going to switch fast to the County Court.
And I hope you'll summarize that for us. Thank you.
Okay, I'll try to do that. This is to the Board of Supervising Care of you all, and I'll give you a copy of it. Good morning, all. Regarding case 176081 for quiet title heavily fought, Presiding Judge David Hughes did not err. On the contrary, there were two documents, one properly filed and recorded, and the other not recorded. Both were filed by court action, but not by the county on the second one. However, the second document with its A to M instructions for county's follow-through was never carried out to completion by the Santa Barbara County, and so never recorded by the county error, not by the court's error. Much later, when Board of Supervisors asked County Council, what happened? The Board and I received a carefully concerted, concocted, four-page letter, alibi blaming an inexperienced judge pro tem, there were four judges ruling in that case, for failing to appoint an officer of the court to be a special master of the court, to follow out the court's 13 guidelines and record the completion. So far, this was never done, and has never been done by county, and I can't buy, sell, lease, rent, harvest or anything on my property. And this has been going on since I've owned the property 42 years. I'd like to have you do something about it before I get angry. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Thorndike. Now is the time for Planning Commissioners' informational reports. Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, some-
I've got a grand jury allocation for this county.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thorndike.
Sometime back, I requested some information concerning some grading on 246 as you exit Lompoc in a easterly fashion, and the staff went out and looked, and apparently there was some illegal grading going on, but the, there's, the landowner is in the process of getting the proper permits and possibly may have to pay a fine. But the staff gave me a report, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Great, good. Thank you. Anyone else? No? All right, thank you. We'll move on to the minutes. Our first will be the minutes of May 5. Do I hear a motion for approval?
I move approval.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion or? Commissioner Brooks? You all right? Okay. So, all those in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. Move on to minutes of May 12. Is there a motion to approve?
So.
Okay, and a second?
Oh, second.
Okay. I just have one thing, and I'd just like my comments regarding the Robler Wine Reconceptual Review, I'll provide those to Mr. Villalobos after the meeting, just to kind of tweak them. Commissioner Coney?
I just noticed several little typographical errors I'll discuss with Mr. Villalobos.
All right, okay, great. Thank you. So, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I also had a concern about a statement that was in my review of the San Inez Senior Housing Project. Can I offer a clarification or wording, or shall I just discuss it with-
Yeah, if it's just a matter of wordsmithing, we just give them to Mr. Villalobos.
Okay, I think I can do that.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Unless, Ms. Black?
Madam Chair, if we're going to adopt the minutes today, I think we need to know what the changes are for the record.
Okay. Then, for mine, it'll be on page three of the minutes of May 12. I'd like to have the second sentence eliminated, as well as the last sentence eliminated.
In the first or second bullet? Which one are you talking about?
Oh, the first bullet, excuse me.
Second sentence?
Yeah, beginning with concern.
Okay.
And then, just have the last, last sentence eliminated. And Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you. My concern was with page five, and these are my comments on the senior housing conceptual review. I think if it could say, maybe just a condition, it says there is a need for this type of housing. I believe what I said was, you know, based on the public comments that were just made, there seems to be a need. But then I clarified it, and I think that is in the second bullet, the applicant should reach out to the public to get support. I thought what I had said, the need for that type of housing, was not addressed or ever brought up during the San Inez Plan. So I would just say, judging from today's public comments, there might be a need, but I did not mean to say that, yes, there is a need. And then I had gone on to say that perhaps the applicant could do a survey, you know, to see if, in fact, if there was a need for that type of housing.
Okay. Okay, great. All right, thank you. So with those changes, Commissioner-
I'm sorry. I don't want these to get into our final minutes, so I'll just run through them. Page three, in Commissioner Brown's comments, in the first sentence, the word is pairin', P-A-I-R, instead of pairing, carving. The next page, page four, under Commissioner Valencia's comments, the second sentence, we need to compromise on the amount rather than comprise the amount. The next is on page 10. And we're talking about a new section, 3.1.10 at the top of the page, and the second paragraph, the second sentence reads, that's the third sentence, "The project reduces the number of special events, 10 instead of 12, and a maximum attendees, 100 instead of 200 from the LUDC standard." I think it's ambiguous, but beyond that, we just don't need that A. We can just say, "and maximum attendees." That's in the first line there. And then, there are three different places where the next comment applies, starting on page 12, under condition 13. These all have to do with the hours of construction activity, and we refer to this as the standard. And I think what we're really talking about is maybe standard hours, or the regular hours, or the established hours. I'm not sure how the Commission would like to refer to it, but to refer Monday, the standard is revised by the County of Santa Barbara, and that occurs there, as well as in the next project, which is discussed on pages 16 and 17. In both cases, it was Commissioner Blau's suggestion that if there's a subsequent revision to the construction hour limitations, that these hours would be adjusted in the project. But the term "standard" I don't think is appropriate for the hours of construction. Those are my comments.
So how would you like to characterize that? Ms. Van Mullen, do you have any suggestions, since this is in part of the conditions?
Madam Chair, Ms. Black and I were just discussing it, and we thought perhaps we could say standard construction hours? But it's really up to your Commission on how to clarify that.
Well, I don't think that completely clarifies the sentence. Shouldn't it be unless the standard is revised, unless the, are we not?
That's, Madam Chair, that's what it says now. I think the-
Shall be between Monday to-
Unless the standard construction hours are revised by the County of Santa Barbara.
There you go. Is that, Commissioner, did I get it? Okay. And that will be in three places?
Right.
Okay, okay. All right. Any others? None others? Okay. Then, all those in favor of approval of those minutes with the changes?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. We're going to move on to Director's Report and Board of Supervisors' hearing summary. Welcome, Dr. Russell.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Commissioners, pleasure to be here. There have been three Board of Supervisors' hearings since you last met on the 12th of May, and there have been some interesting items. The 18th was, I believe, the second day for the Botanic Garden appeals. Was that the first? The first day for the Botanic Garden appeals? And they finished yesterday, so if there's questions on those appeals, we can talk about those in a minute. That was the primary hearing item of interest, I believe, on the 18th. On the 25th, there were a couple of interesting items, actually. One was the response by the CEO's office to a request by the Board to analyze whether the HCD department and the IT department should, in part or in whole, be incorporated into other departments. And the decision was made to move the IT department back into General Services, and the decision was made to keep HCD as a separate, independent department, but to take the redevelopment agency and place that in PND. So that will be coming to PND, which is fine. I think that'll work, that'll work well. The team, the team effort that has characterized the RDA over the past couple of years will continue in the same manner. So we're looking forward to that. Also, there was an amendment to the county sequel guidelines specifically to not require a environmental coordinator from outside the department that is initiating a public EIR. Our experience with that had been, and I was the environmental coordinator for years in San Diego, so it's something I'm very familiar with. And the experience that we've had over the past three or four years is that, due to expertise and time constraints, that when we initiated EIRs for community plans, for example, it required that we hire someone from outside the county, which was costly and added very little value to the process. So by deleting that requirement, it'll probably have no effect on the transparency of the process or the quality of the documents, but it will save a lot of money. And in the event that the CEO feels that for a particular initiated EIR, whatever it might be, if they feel that there should be an environmental coordinator from outside the department, they can still make that decision. So it does not remove the ability of the CEO to make that requirement, it just removes it as a requirement that is automatic.
Were, community plans the only documents that were affected?
So far, yes.
Oh, really? Interesting.
Yeah, we've had, we spent, oh, in the past three, four years, we spent well over $200,000 paying outside staffing of the environmental coordinator position, which we thought was not really a prudent expense, or necessary, actually. Also, the ag permit streamlining, first reading was heard on the 25th, and I believe that the Board adopted pretty much what you recommended. And so that was, no changes there. And then yesterday, second reading of the, that ordinance, and just an FYI, we finally are setting the hearing for the Decker appeal, so that's going to be upcoming there. And then, the two items, we finished off on the Botanic Gardens, and there was, I think we're done. And Supervisor Carver Hall led the way in terms of crafting the motion, and I think that it was a reasonable approach, a reasonable solution to the issues that were raised. And they heard the three appeals of the Planning Commission's decisions together, and then the H-LAC appeal they heard separately. If you have any questions on what transpired, I'm sure that we could be happy to comment.
Yeah, Ms. Black.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I hesitate because it's hard to remember where the Commission left off and the Board action ended, but I'll try and summarize what I think were the largest changes that were made by the Board of Supervisors. Most of them dealt with the intensity of use of the property. All of the buildings, except for two cottages on the Hanson site, and the reconstruction of the Director's Residence were approved by the Board of Supervisors. So the physical improvements that your Commission looked at were indeed carried forward. The only change on the Director's Residence is that the cottage was moved to the Director's Residence to replace the residence that was lost in the fire, rather than reconstructing an additional building on-site. And that change was mainly made to try to limit the number of residential units on-site consistent with the zoning ordinance. In terms of intensity of use, the Board of Supervisors did not grant the growth rate that the garden had sought, so they have 110,000 visitor limit per year. They limited the anytime attendance at the garden to 205 people, inclusive of staff and volunteers, docents and visitors during the high fire season, and they limited the anytime cap to 255 during the non-high fire season. So those were fairly substantial changes. The Board also limited special events to 17 a year, allowing only one per month during the high fire season and up to two per month during the low fire season. They had a number of conditions to address fire in a little bit more rigorous way, some of which were a result of just the changes that were occurring as the Commission was reviewing the project and the National Weather Service being more involved in calling high fire events. They incorporated a ROS system, which is an on-site weather monitoring system, into the conditions of approval and required closures under certain conditions. Oh, significantly, in terms of the appeal of the Historic Landmarks Advisory Commission's action on the meadow terrace, the Board of Supervisors upheld the action of the HLAC and required removal of the meadow terrace and-
And what of the pavers?
And they also eliminated the 10% expansion of pavers within the historic garden. So, yeah, just allowing the pavers around the buildings for fire and ADA access. So, you know, it's essentially the same plan that your Commission approved, but with some restrictions, mainly on intensity of use. So I'm sure I missed a number of details, because there were quite a few details. We also specified, essentially, there are three sets of events that can occur at the garden. There are community events, which was presented to the Commission. Those are the larger, day-long kind of events where people come and go. The garden's allowed to have 10 events throughout the calendar year that are defined as community events. They're open to the public, and they occur throughout the day. The limitation would be on the anytime cap. So there's no particular limitation on the number of people who can attend the events, but the anytime cap will always prevail. Then the second set of events were special events, and your Commission spent some time on those. That's the number that was limited to 17 with the 1983 attendees per year cap. And then there were, and those were events of over 80 people, and it triggered the shuttles and other requirements. And then there were events under 80 people. So there's kind of three classes of events.
Commissioner Valencia?
Well, my comments were with respect to the ag report that Dr. Russell gave. I believe the North County Supervisors were very concerned about the setbacks, and they asked that this be revised in a two-year period. I think I heard that in the testimony, which was very important for our part.
Yes, that's correct.
All right.
Well, I thought, was it not for to come-
Reviewed.
Yeah, for the-
Reviewed.
Yeah, it was to be reviewed, right, in two years.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you. I'm going back to the review of the Santa Barbara Botanic Garden. I have to say, I was very pleased with the compromises that continued to be made, you know, at the Board of Supervisors' level. I was very pleased, and I clarify if I'm wrong on this, that there will be no amplified music, that only a mic could be used. And I know that was a very big concern for me, for these evening events with the music ricocheting throughout the canyon, and I was, I want to comment on that, because that certainly affected how I felt about the plan. Thank you.
Madam Chair, and Commissioner Brooks, that's correct. And in addition, the Board required that all special events end by sunset, and that people be off the site an hour later. So I think both of those measures, the limitation on amplified music and the hours of operation, were intended to address neighborhood compatibility issues.
Okay, great. Commissioner Coney?
With respect to the Botanic Garden, thank you, Madam Chair. Two questions that were vexing to the Planning Commission. One, this definition of high fire season versus not high fire season, there are differences in numbers of attendees, event types, all kinds of things. How is staff going to determine the difference?
Madam Chair, and Commissioner Coney, that's a really good question, and it was one that the Board spent some time with. Based upon the advice of the Fire Department, the high fire season was defined as May 1st through November 30th of each year. Now, that's not to say that fires don't occur outside of that timeframe, but that's the most significant period of time where the limits would be imposed.
And then, a second question with regard to effective dates. I heard the discussion yesterday, and I'm still not certain how that came out, but there was discussion of the garden accepting or not- there was discussion of the garden accepting or not of the new conditions, and maybe you could just clarify that.
Sure. Madam Chair, at, at staff's suggestion, we recommended Condition 105, which is a condition that attempted to clarify when various aspects of the permit would be effective. As your commission's aware, the garden is currently operating under a very old CUP. They can continue to operate under that CUP. And so what we wanted to clarify was, when would the new CUP essentially be effective on the garden's current operations? And what we drafted for the board's consideration, and they ultimately accepted, was allowing the garden to put their operational conditions in place by January 1st, 2011. So they essentially have to comply with a number of conditions by January 1st, 2011. If they don't comply with those, either because they try and they fail, or they choose not to pursue this permit, January 1st, 2011, that permit will be null and void, and they would fall back to their existing CUP. So that was, the intent of the condition was not to give them, you know, two to five years to comply with the new provisions of the CUP when they started their construction project. We really wanted to have a very crisp timeframe for them to operate under the new.
How does that work if they start construction and then ultimately decide they don't want to follow the operational conditions?
By, Madam Chair and Commissioner Cooney, by the time they start construction, they will be operating under the new CUP, and so there won't be the old CUP to fall back on. It will have been superseded by the new. So the way that the conditions are set forth by January 1st, 2011, they'll be under the operational conditions of the new CUP, or that entire new CUP will essentially be null and void, and they'll go back to their old CUP, but it won't, they can't do both. They can't operate under the old CUP and construct under the new.
All right. So would the county start processing applications, follow-on permits and so forth for construction prior to January 1, 2011?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Cooney, that's not our assumption, that they will be ready for that at all.
Thank you.
They certainly wouldn't issue any permits before then.
Was there any change to the standards for construction? I thought I heard that in terms of the phasing.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, we, what we did in the conditions of approval is we attempted to remedy sort of the community and the commission's desire to expedite construction so that construction doesn't, isn't, you know, extremely spread out with the analysis and the EIR. And so the way we specified it is that the two phases that the commission recommended were still included in the conditions of approval. Two pretty signi, or two somewhat significant changes occurred. One was, the infrastructure needs to be in place and tested before any buildings are constructed. And then the second is, no more than two buildings can be constructed at any given time. So that sort of honors the phasing that was contemplated in the EIR, but also allows them to move along in their construction.
Would that not extend the length of the construction period?
It, Madam Chair, I think it will a bit, but I don't think it will as much as the eight phases that were specified in the EIR.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you for the, Dr. Russell.
And another item yesterday of interest was the coastal resource enhancement funds were distributed by the board, awarded, and they were awarded to a combination of county and non-county projects. I believe most, if not all, of the applications that were received were at least partly or completely funded. So the projects which will receive funding, the Seabird Care Facility, Santa Barbara Wildlife Care Network, Rincon Creek Arundo Removal by the Ag Commissioner's Office, Santa Claus Lane Streetscape Plan by Long Range Planning and PND, Lookout Park Arundo Removal by the Ag Commissioner's Office, Summerlin Community Plan, Office of Long Range Planning and PND, Shoreline Park Improvements and Signs for the City of Santa Barbara, the Gabiotico Plan, Office of Long Range Planning and PND, and the Shorebird Collection Exhibit for the Santa Maria Natural History Museum. The acquisition money was deferred, decisions on acquisition were deferred until early September, at which time the parties interested in acquiring land will be better placed in regard to their negotiations, and also there will be some additional funds available. So it was prudent to delay those decisions, but those applications were also received and will be acted on at that time.
Okay.
And the last thing that I might mention is that there has been a change, a recent change, in state law regarding the analysis of greenhouse gases in SEQA. And the guidelines actually changed in March, and it is coming upon us now to change our procedures and ultimately our guidelines to comply with the new rules, which basically mean that you have to determine significance for greenhouse gas impacts on all the projects that we put out SEQA documents for. So we are now in the process of evaluating and changing our procedures in, on an interim basis. Ultimately, we will need to change the guidelines that will be adopted. But in order to do that, we need such things as the greenhouse gas inventory, which is currently being made, and that, that is part of our climate action strategy. So the actual formal guidelines for the county will have to trail a little bit, but that does not relieve us of the obligation of having some procedures in place in the short term. We've looked at the work that San Diego County has done, we've looked at the work that the Bay Area Air Quality Management District has done, and their efforts appear to be very impressive and will probably serve, to some extent, as a model for what we will be doing. But again, without an inventory, we can't just take what they're doing wholesale because it's based on their inventory. And that's what I have for you today.
Okay. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes. In regard to the greenhouse gas, I believe that our last meeting, we had received a letter from a group talking about this issue. Is this what we're working on right now? Okay, I think it was mentioned, Ms. Black, maybe you could expand on that.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Brooks, yes, it is the same issue, and I think we did appropriately handle that issue on the last item, but we're quickly reaching the point where we need to, our documents need to comply with state law. And so that's what Mr. Russell's talking about.
Dr. Russell, do you have some timeframe in mind when all of these important events will occur?
Interim procedures will be in place very shortly, in a matter of weeks, not months. And the guidelines themselves, I would anticipate that those will be some months down the line, either this fall or this winter, when we get the analysis that we need, which we're anticipating in the late summer or early fall, and then move forward with drafting the changes and getting to the hearing body.
Okay, great. Commissioner Valencia.
Yes. I recall when we dealt with APCD about 10 years ago, we had become familiar with particulate matter. Is that going to be required for this gas house? Because I don't remember any of that type of...
No. Commissioner Valencia, that, those, the, those are aspects of air quality which are certainly very important, but are not specifically affected by the current changes.
Okay. Well, with that, thank you, staff, and we'll now move on to our standard agenda, and let's take a five-minute break to set up for the, for the first item. Thank you.
The Planning and Development Department, that the County Planning Commission review the California Coastal Commission staff recommended modifications to the County Land Use and Development Code, and provide recommendations to the County Board of Supervisors regarding the modifications.
Thank you. Mr. Lengel, to start us on our adventure.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the County Planning Commission. As David just mentioned, the purpose of today's hearing is to allow your commission the opportunity to review in some detail the proposed modifications to the County Land Use and Development Code that the Coastal Commission staff has drafted and has put forth in a staff report as modifications that the Coastal Commission should adopt if they choose to certify the County Land Use and Development Code. The material is, in some places, not as apparent, or the proposed regulations not as apparent as one would hope. So probably in the interest of your understanding material, please ask me questions whenever you feel the need to. Perhaps the best way to approach the modifications is to go through them by the four groups that I've described in the staff report, and I'm thinking it might be better if we also then entertain questions after each modification, so that your understanding will build as we go through the hearing. So with that, by way of a short bit of background, the, in December of 2006, the County Land Use Development Code was submitted to the Coastal Commission for certification. This was the culmination of the first phase of what we called the zoning ordinance reformat project, or ZORP. The idea being to take the five separate articles that contain the zoning regulations for Santa Barbara County, put them into one development code, such that the public and staff could more easily understand the totality of regulations applying to a particular project, and also have the regulations written in a way that were hopefully in clear English and understandable to most people. During the processing of that, the board then made a decision to separate out the Montecito Land Use and Development Code, separate from the regulations of the County Code, Land Use and Development Code. And so there was a second phase that did that, that was adopted approximately a year The Coastal Commission staff originally was shooting to have this come to the Coastal Commission in October of 2009, and they had been reviewing the document for some time, and it wasn't until, basically, the end of August, August 31st, in a meeting that we had with the Coastal Commission staff in Ventura, that for the first time, they alerted us to significant changes that they wanted to make to the Land Use and Development Code. Based on the scope of these changes, we felt that there really wasn't enough time to, you know, perform a comprehensive review of those suggested modifications and provide the Board Supervisors and the public with an opportunity to review those as well, prior to the Coastal Commission hearing. So in October of that year, 2009, we withdrew the Land Use Development Codes from certification processing, and then resubmitted them, essentially starting the time clock over for the Coastal Commission, so that there would be additional time to provide a meaningful review of the proposed modifications.
Noel, can I just go back to the very first item? I was speaking to a former staff member who was involved with the reformatting, and she reminded me that there was significant liaison with the Coastal Commission during the time of the reformatting, before it was done. So I wonder if you would just make a comment for the record about the effort to keep the Coastal Commission informed and involved during the period in time in which there was public involvement in this reformatting effort?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the commission. We did make an attempt to keep the Coastal Commission staff in the loop as to far as what we were doing, how the progress was going, requesting any information from them as to changes they would like to see made to the coastal zoning regulations, because the Article II, the existing coastal zoning ordinance, the implementation portion of the county's local coastal program, was originally adopted a long time ago, and it had not been significantly revised since that time. And so we wanted them to give us any information of things, topic areas they were interested in, that we could address during the, during the formatting, or during the reformatting in the public hearing process. Basically, what we heard back from them was that they were understaffed and didn't really have the time to do that at that point in time. So we were caught, rather, I would say, by surprise with the scope of the recommended modifications that they were proposing.
Commissioner Cooney.
Just in terms of an overview, as I read through the proposed changes, part of the irksome part of the process is that very substantial changes are being suggested to what we originally, as a county, went through and considered, really just trying to update our code, not really making substantial changes. So the Coastal Commission staff, it seems, is taking this opportunity to create a change in what our prior rules had been, as well as commenting on the update. So what we're faced with now, and I mean the Board of Supervisors particularly, is whether they just say to the Coastal Commission, you know, you're going way beyond the scope of what we originally submitted, let's just go back to Article II, or, as I believe that would be considered to be unreasonable, we're faced with hashing out now these various changes, and in effect, the need to identify the substantial changes that this would cause to our LUDC needs to be publicly discussed and adopted anew, because this isn't really our old LD, LUDC, the one that everybody compromised on and worked with two to three years ago. So that, I think, as a background matter, it's a real challenge now, because we've got a two-step process instead of one.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I think that was a really good summary of where we find ourselves, and it's not unusual for us to find ourselves in this situation when we do amendments to our local coastal program. You know, we had this issue when we brought forward the Toro Community Plan and any other coastal plan that required Coastal Commission certification. I guess we didn't quite expect this level of change in the context of the Land Use Development Code. Nonetheless, I think the Coastal Commission is, you know, taking advantage of an opportunity where we are republishing and reformatting our entire Land Use Development Code and trying to insert items into the Land Use and Development Code that they feel are important, and that they feel are important not just for our jurisdiction, but for others as well. So it does sort of leave us in this position of deciding how to move forward. This won't be the last opportunity for the public to comment on this. What we're, we're basically at a, the point where we're about to go to hearing with the Coastal Commission, where they'll make a decision. And the purpose of your comments to the Board of Supervisors, and in turn, the board's comments to the Coastal Commission, is to try to focus on those suggested modifications where we think the commission ought to reconsider their staff's recommendations. So that's kind of where we're at today. And post-Coastal Commission hearing, then we'll be in a position of deciding, okay, now, given what they've done, do we want to accept all of those suggested modifications, or essentially go back to Article II and reject those? So we'll have another hearing process at that point in time. But I think the, the real purpose of this hearing is to try to identify those suggested modifications that are most troublesome, and try to focus on those and sway the commission to take a different action than their staff is recommending, or maybe even sway the staff, although we've been working with the staff for a long time. I think we're about where we're going to be with them.
Okay. Continue. Thank you.
So continuing on, again, as I mentioned, October 2009, in order to give the, both the county and the Coastal Commission additional time to review the document, we did withdraw the document from certification and we submitted it on the same date. This, now, the new deadline for the Coastal Commission Act on our document is February of 2011. It would be nice if we got this wrapped up before that, though. I've been deep within this process for about five years now. Between October and April 2010, this year, Planning and Development Staff... Between October and April 2010, this year, Planning, Development, and Staff and the Coastal Commission staff have been working very closely together to try and resolve any differences that we could. I did author several new language sections for them to address a lot of their, their points, and I think that they were receptive to that and in most cases accepted that language as satisfying their concerns. But there are still some that are outstanding. In April, well, I'm sorry, let me back up. The Coastal Commission's second hearing, or the rescheduled hearing, was supposed to have occurred on April 15th of this year. We did not receive the staff report for that hearing until April 1st. And as you can tell by your binder, it's rather lengthy, thick, voluminous, contained a lot of language text that we hadn't seen as of that point, and again, we felt that it was just too compressive a timeframe to provide a comprehensive and thorough analysis of the recommended modifications and present those to the board of supervisors if they wanted to provide any testimony or comments to the Coastal Commission prior to the April 15th hearing. So again, at the behest of the board, we did pull the item essentially from the Coastal Commission agenda, and it's now put off until August of this year. August 11th or 12th, and the hearing will be in San Luis Obispo in case anybody wants So moving on, the recommended modifications from the Coastal Commission fall into essentially four main groups. The first group is probably the most controversial, and these are the modifications that the Coastal Commission staff feel are necessary in order to conform the county LUDC to both the county certified coastal land use plan as well as implement the Coastal Act. The second group are modifications where we suggested revisions to the Coastal Commission staff that we felt would address some processing conundrums and help smooth out this process, but the Coastal Commission staff did not agree with us and did not make those revisions. The third group is the majority of the suggested modifications, and these are minor clarifications, cleanups, and corrections that we support be made to the county LUDC. And lastly, Group Four, there are some beneficial modifications that the Coastal Commission did include at the request of Planning and Development to be included in this package. So beginning in Group One, Modification Nine, Allowed Land Uses and Permit Requirements Table, this is probably the most significant of the proposed modifications, as it seeks to divide all the allowable uses that are currently allowed by its coastal development permit, or in some cases coastal development permit with development plan, and categorize those uses as either principal permitted uses or non-principal permitted uses. If a use is classified as a non-principal permitted use, it's then termed as appealable development, and within the coastal zone, appealable development is subject to a public hearing requirement, and the decision on that permit is ultimately appealable to the Coastal Commission once local appeals have been exhausted. So within the different zones in the County Land Use Development Code, in agricultural zones, agriculture would be the principally permitted use. Within the residential and resource protection zones, residential is deemed to be the principal permitted use. Commercial zones, retail and service uses, of course, are the principal permitted uses. Industrial zones, industrial manufacturing, processing uses are the principal permitted uses. And then within the special purpose zones, it sort of depends on what the main thrust of that zone is. So for example, in the recreation zone, recreation will be the principal permitted Looking at agricultural zones, just for a minute, and looking at the differences between the principal permitted uses and the non-principal uses, this gives sort of a flavor of how the proposed, how the uses are proposed to be divided. So that you can see, you know, in ag zones, definitely ag accessory uses, when accessory to a principal, ag use are principal uses also. Ag product shipping facilities, you know, smaller than 20,000 square feet, animal keeping, cultivated agriculture, grazing, greenhouses, smaller than 20,000 square feet, and residential, limited. And I'll go back to that. Non-principal uses would be ag product sales, and again, this is what's being proposed by the Coastal Commission staff, family daycare, care, guest houses, home occupation, mining, and unlimited residential, and I'll explain those things again. Under the residential, in the right-hand column, or actually the left-hand column also, the, any dwelling that is restricted to occupancy by a farm employee would be considered principal permitted use. However, in regards to the primary dwelling for the owner of the property, originally the Coastal Commission staff proposed that all such dwellings be designated as a non-principal use and thus subject to a public hearing and appeal to the Coastal Commission. We were able to get them to somewhat compromise on that point, and they're now proposing that, provided that the, that there is an existing primary agricultural use of the property, and if the occupancy of the dwelling is restricted to the operator of the agricultural use, if the dwelling gross floor area is 3,000 square feet or less, and that if the dwelling, all accessory structures to that dwelling and landscaping do not occupy an area greater than 10,000 square feet, then that dwelling may be considered to be a principal permitted use also.
Madam Chair, I just want to jump in because I noticed one of the public commenters actually commented on this particular issue and indicated that this would severely limit homes on agricultural properties, and I just wanted to make it clear, it certainly makes the process more complicated, but if any of those conditions are not met in an application, it doesn't mean that they can't process a permit. It simply means they would have to process a CD, what we know, what we term a coastal development permit with a hearing before the zoning administrator, and that permit would be subject to appeal all the way to the Coastal Commission. So, it's a much more onerous process, but it does not prevent a property owner from applying. And I thought that was an important distinction. Commissioner Cooney.
Madam Chair, I'm trying to put our discussion today in context. Obviously, we could spend not only today but several days on these changes, and I know the staff has spent hours and hours on it. But it seems to me we need to keep in mind that we have a Land Use and Development Code in effect for the non-coastal areas of the county. And so what we're talking about throughout this process, when we talk about agricultural properties or commercial zone properties, industrial, resource protection, all of these are properties which are in the coastal zone. So what we're driving toward is likely a difference between how the very same project on a piece of land in the coastal zone would be treated in terms of process rather than one that is just over the line outside the coastal zone. And, you know, we've been talking about these agricultural properties in particular, trying to loosen and make easier the process, the processing of improvements on ag properties. And what I think the Coastal Commission staff is saying, notwithstanding all your work in these areas, we're going to require a different process within the coastal zone. Am I wrong about anything?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Cooney, no, I think you're, I think that's a pretty accurate summary. Another way of looking at it is, essentially, they, the Coastal Commission, through a number of these suggested modifications, is treating development throughout the coastal zone similarly to development within the appeals jurisdiction of the coastal zone. So right now, any development that's proposed in the appeals jurisdiction of the coastal zone, which is between the mean high tide land and the first public road, is subject to a coastal development permit with a hearing. In this Commission's case, those projects are normally heard by the zoning administrator unless they're otherwise discretionary. So, essentially, this change in principally permitted and non-principally permitted uses would require all non-principally permitted uses throughout the coastal zone to be treated like every use is treated in the, in the appeals jurisdiction of the coastal zone. Interestingly enough, there are some areas in the coastal zone that are, that are within the appeals jurisdiction, such as Hollister Ranch. The entire Hollister Ranch is within the appeals jurisdiction of the coastal zone. So many of these proposed suggested modifications wouldn't have much of an effect in Hollister Ranch because they're already subject to a coastal development permit with a hearing. But other areas, Galida, the Carpinteria Valley, the Gabiota Coast, would be affected in a more significant way.
Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Black, we're using staff, coastal staff, and coastal commission intermittently, and some of the things, it was indicated that the staff said such and such, and I want to know, did the commission support what the staff was saying? Is it always, are all the comments coming from the coastal commission, do they include the staff, or is the staff coming in separately and saying, no, we don't like this?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Valencia, very good question. And we're probably being a bit sloppy in our language. Whenever we say the Coastal Commission or the Coastal Commission staff today, we really mean the staff. We have not been to nor heard from the Coastal Commission as a hearing body yet on this matter. So we mean the staff.
So we need to be very explicit when we discuss those things.
Yes, we mean the staff.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Brown, Ms. Black, in going through the document, they added, I believe they being the Coastal Commission staff, inland area versus coastal. Does that, is that what you just explained, you know, the differentiation between what's on the other side of the road, let's say the main road, versus, you know, what's truly the coastal zone? I didn't understand why they went throughout the document and added inland versus other.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Brooks, the Land Use Development Code will be a combined code for the coastal zone and the inland area, and so what I think the Commission staff did in an abundance of caution, I think we thought was a bit overkill, was to distinguish in pretty much every instance where a regulation applied, just coastal or just inland. So that's, I think that's what you'll see throughout. It does sort of pose an interesting issue, which is some of the suggested modifications start to go into the inland code just by making clarification, so we'll have some cleanup to do on the inland code as well.
Back to you, Mr. Lengel.
Thank you. Yeah, so I will try and be consistent when I refer to the Coastal Commission as being the staff of the Coastal Commission, although in some of these modifications, they are proposing modifications that have been in front of the Coastal Commission itself on other occasions in other jurisdictions and are seeking to apply a more of a consistent statewide standard to some of these processes. And then also coastal versus inland, the inland really means the non-coastal zone portion of the county. Moving from agricultural to the resource protection zones, again, within the resource protection zones, residential is one of the designated principal permitted uses along with accessory structures. But again, the Coastal Commission staff, at least in the RMZ zone, is proposing to put certain limitations on what residences can be considered to be a principal permitted use, and that is, provided they're less, that they occupy the house, the accessory structures, the landscaping occupies an area less than 10,000 square feet, and they don't occur on slopes in excess of 30%, then they qualify as a principal permitted use. And as Diane mentioned earlier, if they don't qualify as a principal permitted use, they can still be applied for and constructed if the permit is approved, but again, it would be subject to a public hearing requirement and potential for appeal to the Coastal Commission. Non-principal uses within the resource protection zones are agriculture, essentially, keeping of large animals such as horses, cows, et cetera, education, research facilities, again, family daycare, guest houses, home occupations. Moving into the residential zones, again, residential and accessory uses, some are considered to be a principal permitted use, and I'll elaborate on that latter point a couple of slides down the road here. Under non-principal permitted uses will be the agriculture, accessory uses, cultivated agriculture, keeping of large animals, artist studios, daycare, golf courses, greenhouses, things of that nature. Residential second units, even though that they are a residential use, are deemed to be a, a non-principal use because it's a use, or it's a residence in addition to what's primarily permitted in that zone district. So the Coastal Commission has always termed these to be a non-principal permitted use and requires a, some sort of a, a public hearing process and appeal to the Coastal Commission.
Mr. Lengel, so how does that, how does that coincide, or how are RSU regulations which affect other areas? It seems like this is kind of strange that the Coastal Commission would have additional jurisdiction over RSUs when, when there's not this other, in other areas. Even though, I don't understand that, how, it seems like they're trumping other state law.
Madam Chair and members of the Commission, it's sometimes difficult to reconcile different state laws that appear in different areas. For example, the, the main regulations dealing with residential second units that limits our discretion is found in the government code. The Coastal Act and all the regulations that flow from that is found in the Public Resources Code. So there's two sets of state laws applying to basically the same use, and the difficulty is always in reconciling what one says in comparison to the other. And so as far as residential second units go, because the government code says that you cannot require a public hearing and have to be approved in a ministerial manner, the Coastal Commission has said, okay, we'll accept that, but because we're calling it a non-principal permitted use, it's therefore appealable to the Coastal Commission should anybody be so aggrieved and decide to take it that far.
So Madam Chair, I think the, the answer is in the coastal zone. When you have two laws that apply to the same thing, they simply have to be remedied, and it's not always the same remedy as in the inland area, because you don't have that other state law.
Right. Thank you.
Within the commercial zones, principal uses would be retail and service uses, uses accessory there too, some of them, and again, we'll get into this a little bit, and visitor serving uses. And the non-principal uses are, sampling is listed on the screen on the right-hand side. So again, those types of uses that are not strictly retail or service in nature.
So if you, just make sure I understand this. So if I have a business or a commercial development, an office, and I want to change, I move, or one business leaves and another comes in, and the new business is wholesaling, I'm not sure how that is defined, that would require, now it requires nothing. I mean, now it requires, does it require, what is the requirement now for a permit for, for that sort of change of business use?
Currently, that's just handled with a, a straight CDP coastal development permit as a change of use too. So the staff verifies that the use is allowed. So, the staff verifies that the use is allowed, they're meeting the development standards for parking, things like that.
So, there is something required now? Okay. All right, thank you.
Moving quickly through industrial, principal permitted uses in the MCD, which is the coastal, industrial coastal dependent zone, and the MCR, the coastal, I forget, related, thank you, coastal-related zone. Aquaculture is designated as a principal permitted use, along with industrial, manufacturing, processing, and wholesaling. Non-principle permitted uses, as proposed by the coastal commission staff, would be childcare that's accessory to those uses, a fitness and health club, and personal services for use by the employees of those facilities.
So, what is the coastal commission trying to achieve here with these non, excuse me, what is staff trying to achieve with these uses, with this sort of this categorization of these uses? I don't, it doesn't make sense.
Madam Chair, I think their rationale is outlined in the staff report that we've attached to your packet today. Essentially, they've indicated that the coastal act itself, the public resources code section where the coastal act is codified, requires designation of principally permitted uses. And I think the intention is that the coastal commission has reviewed our local coastal program, including our implementing ordinances, and has essentially approved those as principally permitted uses, and anything else should be subject to their review on appeal. I think that's their rationale, and it derives from the act.
Okay, Commissioner Valencia.
Madam Chair, Ms. Black, when I read this, and it was difficult to try to read this in three days, you know, but I read like the first six, eight pages, and it seems to me like they want more scrutiny and more bringing the level of public hearings down to a lower level or to a higher level, whichever it is. If you wanted us to open a little popcorn stand before you'd come up to the desk and say, "I know," and get a permit, they want a public hearing. Are there fees associated with this? That people, because of the higher scrutiny, the more, the higher level of development rather than a permit, you get a condition use permit or a development plan or something, there's going to be increased fees? Who gets the fees? Is the county or the coastal commission?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Valencia, we have separate fees for a coastal development permit and a coastal development permit with a hearing, and the latter is more expensive, it requires a hearing before the zoning administrator and a staff report. Those fees are to cover our costs, so we actually get the fees, but we're not causing that to happen. And I think, I think you're right. I think your assessment that the coastal commission's looking for a higher level of review and in fact is looking for a check with a potential appeal to them is really at the heart of these suggested modifications.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Brooks.
Thank you, Chair. Looking at these lists of non-principled uses, I'm just kind of curious, and it's a general question, how did they, how did this coastal commission staff come up with these? Did they possibly look at other areas, let's say not Santa Barbara County, and they decided there were too many childcare facilities along the coastal? It just seems to me it's, there's certain things here that they have focused on, and I'm just wondering, what is the problem with, you know, daycare? Or, you know, over and over again, all the different areas, you know, some of the other ones, you know, fitness, health club, you know, you have a little room in your aquaculture place for people to work out. I mean, were these historically problems in other areas, and that's why they're listing them here? Help me on that.
Well, Madam Chair, I don't know that I can really tell you how they precisely came up with this, but I can tell you how I think they came up with it, the staff came up with it. I think they looked at the purpose and intent of the zone districts, first of all, and tried to focus on those uses that are consistent with the purpose and intent of the zone district. So, if you look at the commercial zone district, childcare is not a use that is consistent on its face with the purpose and intent of a commercial zone district. So, I think that's how they essentially looked at it, and I'm sure they looked at other jurisdictions. I don't think they looked at uses and said, "We don't like childcare uses, and so we're going to make them a non-principally permitted use." I think it was really based upon the purpose and intent of the zone district.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, just to build on that slightly, for example, and the coastal commission staff is also looking at the resource protection policies and the priorities under the coastal act, and making the determination of what should qualify as a principal permitted use or not. And so, that, for example, in the, in the commercial areas, because one of the priorities of the coastal act is to promote visitor-serving uses, those uses would clearly fall and qualify as the principal permitted uses. But uses other than those that strictly provide for visitor-serving opportunities, especially in the visitor-serving commercial zone, would be the ones that would typically not be designated as the principal permitted uses. So, they use sort of that screen as well in determining the break between the two.
Mr. Lengel, I just want to take a break here from your discussion. I know we have a lot of people in the audience who came to speak to many of these issues today, and I think that considering the volume of material, we probably could be here for a couple of weeks going over this. I don't think that's our intent. I'm just wondering if there's a good time to take a break so that we could hear public comment in your presentation, and as I look through your slides, we go on with group one for quite a few pages. Perhaps you can make some recommendations so that we could take public comment at some time. I'm sure most, many of these folks in our audience are probably well-versed in some of these and have many concerns, which they're well ahead of us in understanding on the commission. So, could I just have you look at that and perhaps give me some indication of where you think it might be appropriate? We seem to be asking questions, which is good as we go along, but I would like to, you know, hear from the public, because I think many of them probably on the group one, if we should wait until the end of group one. Ms. Black.
Madam Chair, I think if we went through modification, finished modification nine and 10.
Okay.
And then took public comment.
Okay.
And then took additional public comment at the end of group one.
Of group one, okay. So, we'll do that.
That probably is going to capture most of people's comments.
Okay, great. Okay, good. All right, thank you.
And I'll try and speed it up a bit too.
Okay, thank you.
A second portion of modification nine changes the permit categories from what the county adopted as part of the county land use development code for certain land uses. And these changes are basically going from what we termed to be an exempt use that did not require planning permit approval to a use that requires at a minimum a coastal development permit. This primarily comes down within the agricultural zones, where we, basically recognizing past practice, had proposed that agricultural activities such as cultivated agriculture, vineyards, grazing, things of that nature, would not require a planning permit. The coastal commission staff, however, is changing that to require a coastal development permit whenever there's an intensification of agriculture occurring. So, for example, if you're going from grazing to row crops, that would be considered intensification, would require a CDP. If you're grazing land that's never been grazed or disturbed before, that would be considered intensification, that would require a CDP. But again, it's important to understand that even though a CDP would be required in these instances, because these agricultural activities are deemed to be a principal permitted use, it would still just be the coastal development permit and would not require a public hearing or potential for appeal to the coastal commission. Animal keeping is another area where the county had proposed that several animal keeping activities would be exempt from a permit. The coastal commission staff is proposing that these be changed to require a coastal development permit in concert with whatever you're keeping animal in, which are known as confined animal facilities. So, the way this would break down in the residential zones, because keeping of large animals is not deemed a principal permitted use, if you live in Hope Ranch and you want to keep a horse in your backyard in a stable, both the keeping of the horse and the building of the stable would require a CDP with a hearing, appealable to the coastal commission. The coastal commission staff is proposing several additional changes to land use tables, and this sort of gets more at what I was talking about as far as the coastal priority uses. They are seeking to do this in order to preserve long-term agriculture in the agricultural zones, and part of this is by deleting several uses that are currently allowed by a CDP or a CUP that they feel are incompatible with that agricultural use and the protection for agricultural uses in the coastal zone provided by the coastal act. And so, some of these CUPs would be things like cemeteries, fairgrounds, golf courses, recreational facilities. They propose that schools, that new schools not be allowed in the agricultural zones, that existing school facilities could be expanded or reconstructed if necessary. They're proposing that churches not be allowed in the agricultural zones unless this would violate the federal ARLUPA requirements. For, we'll have a quiz on this later, but ARLUPA stands for the Religious Land Use Institutionalized Persons Act that provides protections for giving people the free exercise of their religion. So, essentially, under these regulations, that if, if the zone allows for public assembly of people in one regard, you cannot prevent them from assembling for a religious stand or as part of a church. Another goal that the coastal commission staff is trying to achieve is to protect environmentally sensitive habitat areas and watersheds in the resource protection zones. And they propose to do this by restricting agricultural operations in the resource management zone, as well as, excuse me, restricting ag operations in Toro Canyon zone. We pointed out to the coastal commission staff that they had just certified the Toro Canyon plan not that long ago, and they, I guess, are having second thoughts about certain of the regulations and permanent processes and are seeking to change those from what the county had certified fairly recently. So, in the RMZ zone, grazing currently is allowed by coastal development permit. The proposal is to shift that to a minor conditional use permit and restrict to 30 percent slopes or less. In the MT Toro zone, grazing is currently not allowed, and actually, in this case, the coastal commission staff is seeking to allow it but require a minor conditional use permit. And cultivated agriculture in the MT Toro zone is allowed with a coastal development permit if there's evidence of a historic use either on the site or nearby within the last 10 years, and a minor conditional use permit for all new operations. The coastal commission recommends, coastal commission staff modification would be to require a minor CUP for all agriculture regardless of if there's been historic use or not. So, any increase in the amount of agricultural activity on a piece of property under the coastal commission staff proposed modification would require a minor conditional use permit, and they're also proposing to restrict it to slopes of 30 percent or less. Again, similar to what we covered in the last slide, they're also proposing to delete several uses that are currently allowed by a CUP with the same restrictions on schools In the commercial zones, the proposed modifications would serve to, in their mind, protect and preserve, or protect and promote visitor-serving uses in the commercial zones. In the C1 zone, the proposed modification is to add visitor-serving commercial as a principal permitted use. In the PI zone, again, to delete certain uses allowed with a CDP or CUP that they feel are incompatible with the purpose and intent of that zone. And in the visitor-serving commercial zone, add certain uses such as campgrounds, bed and breakfast, hostels as a principal permitted use, add stand-alone restaurants as a non, I'm sorry, mistake, as a non-principle permitted use, so it shouldn't be PP. They're also proposing, again, to, you know, reserve the zone for commercial uses, several uses that are currently allowed by a CUP that they feel are incompatible with the overall visitor-serving nature of the CB zone, such as cemeteries, fairgrounds, golf courses, et cetera. Again, the restriction on churches, and there is no allowance for any expansion or reconstruction of schools, they're just not allowed.
Coastal areas are okay, but I can't read the URL.
We haven't quite got that level of detail. Moving on quickly to the industrial zones, again, because the coastal-related zone, industrial coastal-related and the coastal dependent industrial zone, is supposed to be only used for those uses that support or require a site on or adjacent to the sea in order to function. They are proposing that we delete several uses that are allowed either with a CDP or a CUP if they do not meet that test, that they need a site on or adjacent to the sea to function. Again, churches, because of their special protections under the federal laws, would not be allowed unless it would result in a violation of those laws, and there is no allowance for the expansion or reconstruction of any existing schools. This modification also proposes to specifically require in the text that a coastal development permit is required for all subdivisions, lot line adjustments, and voluntary mergers. Currently, Article II only specifies that a CDP is required to record a vesting map. So, this modification would expand that requirement to all maps, all lot line adjustments, and all voluntary mergers. Also, the modification would designate these, quote, "land uses" as a non-principle permitted use, such that a public hearing would be required in all cases, and there's potential for appeal to the coastal commission. As far as the impact of this particular modification goes, it's not that substantial for subdivisions and lot line adjustments since a, since a public hearing is already required for those. All it would really do is add the potential for appeal to the coastal commission. But in regards to the voluntary merger, that would provide a significant increase in the processing, both time and cost, because currently voluntary mergers are handled strictly through this county surveyor's office as a very ministerial type of application, provided you comply with the, with the rules that are laid out in the state law, the surveyor will record the merger. Simple as that. This will change that to now have to have the county surveyor referral such applications to the planning and development department for us to process the coastal development permit with hearing and send it back to them once that's been accomplished.
Ms. Black.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to point out what, what I consider to be an additional, pretty substantial, impact of this provision, and it isn't a cost issue per se, but by designating subdivisions and lot line adjustments as non-principally permitted uses, essentially, the coastal commission is capturing jurisdiction over all land divisions throughout the coastal zone, meaning that they would be subject to appeal to the commission. And that's simply not the case right now. We only submit projects that are processed through the county of Santa Barbara to the coastal commission that are located within the appeals jurisdiction when they have a map associated with them. So, I see that as a fairly substantial change.
Do you sort of have any idea of the scope of that change in terms of you go from 10 properties or 10 to 1,000?
Well, Madam Chair, it depends on the number of maps processed in any given year.
Right. So, it's hard to know.
It's, it's hard to know.
Okay.
This is an issue that... This is an issue that the Coastal Commission has, and when I say Coastal Commission, I mean Coastal Commission, has taken action on in other jurisdictions, most recently, I think, in San Luis Obispo where they were requested, the County of San Luis Obispo was requested to submit a map to the commission as appealable development. The commission, the County of San Luis declined to do so and asked for dispute resolution before the Coastal Commission, and the commission upheld their staff's position that this is appealable development. So I say that because this isn't an issue unique to Santa Barbara County. It is something I think the commission itself is trying to impose statewide.
Okay. Thank you.
So wrapping up modification number nine, which, again, is the most comprehensive of the proposed recommended modifications. Staff is definitely concerned with the additional processing cost and time involved for any use that is deemed to be a non-principle permitted use, given that the requirement for a public hearing would be imposed on all such designated uses. We're also concerned with the CDP requirement for the intensification of agriculture and the restrictions on principal permitted residential uses within the ag and resource protection zones. Again, the permit requirement for animal keeping, including the confined animal facility, is going to require substantial, is going to require an additional cost and time delay to the applicant for such activities. And as Diane just mentioned, the CDB requirement for all subdivisions, lot line adjustments, and voluntary mergers, and designating them as a non-principle permitted use is going to increase the time and processing costs for such applications and, again, expand the Coastal Commission's jurisdiction by making these appealable.
Yeah. We'll go through 10, and then we'll hear public comment.
And 10 will be a lot quicker.
Four slides, right.
I promise. Modification number 10 deals with accessory structures and uses and is closely aligned with modification nine in that it divides the accessory structures and uses into those that are deemed to be principal permitted uses and those that are not. Within the agricultural zones, ag structures and uses, when they're a component of the principal permitted ag use of the property, are a principal permitted use. And a limited set of structures that are accessory to the principal permitted residential use can be also considered a principal permitted use. And these would be garages, landscaping, pools, spas, and hot tubs, storage sheds. But, for example, a tennis court, which is not included in that very, very restricted list, would be deemed to then be a non-principle use, as would be a guest house. Similar for the residential resource protection zones, when accessory to a principal permitted use in that zone, garages, landscaping, pools, spas, hot tubs, and storage sheds would be also considered to be a principal permitted use, but all other accessory structures such as a guest house would not be. Commercial, industrial, what's shown on the screen, equipment, maintenance, other minor outbuildings, infrastructure, landscaping, and parking are considered to be principal permitted uses. Everything else is, would be a non-principle permitted use. And so, again, staff's overall comment regarding modification nine is that by designating several uses as non-principle permitted uses, the processing time and cost for such applications will increase substantially for the applicants.
Okay. Okay.
And that concludes.
The first two.
Nine and 10.
Great. Then what I'd like to do is take public comment based on these two modifications. That doesn't mean I'm not going to hear from you otherwise, and hopefully, we will probably, I hope if we can, Ms. Black, conclude this by noon. You think we can, is that something, it's, I know Mr. Lengel's got quite a bit of material here, but.
Madam Chair, I think really through Slide 31 are the substantial issues that the commission's going to want to take up, so I don't think the other will result in much comment.
Okay. All right. We will all take public comment now and then again later, so you have plenty of opportunity to tell us your thoughts. Our first speaker will be David Hill, followed by Mr. Mills, Andy Mills.
My name is David Hill. I'm representing the Coastal Ranches Conservancy. I emailed copies of the letter last night late, so I'm not sure if they got to the board, but I have.
We have copies.
Oh, you've got them?
Yeah, we got copies.
Okay, good, thank you. The Coastal Ranches Conservancy is a small, local nonprofit, and we are involved in trying to promote conservation projects along the Gaviota Coast. We've funded such projects as restoring native grasses, protecting watersheds, riparian habitats. We've worked with the state at the parks to remove invasive plants, and we've worked on improving steelhead habitats among other projects. These are on both public and private lands, and we like to kind of promote cooperative projects and get things done on the ground where possible. Often, the biggest obstacle to doing a project is the cost and difficulty in obtaining permits for the project. And I was glad to see the staff report. I think that that was, that was well done, and I think the thrust of our concerns is that this will make things more difficult. There's a lot of duplication and expense, as you know, in getting permits, and this deters good projects from going forward in many cases. And we'd like to find ways to encourage more projects to go forward. Many of the proposed changes, as described, will discourage projects by adding an extra layer of complexity, and that's been well described, so I won't belabor that. The biggest objection, which also has been addressed, and so I won't go on about that, is that there's been little or no opportunity for public participation. I think that the public policy should be debated and should be transparent, and in this case, it doesn't seem to be. Public policy should not be developed in secret. And so, for that reason, we would like to see the proposed changes rejected. I know some of them probably are good, and they, but if there's, if the Coastal Commission is saying, take it all or none, why then, I think we should say none until at least we've had time to properly analyze and look at it and give some opinions. The Gap PAC, as you know, is underway, and they're doing a lot of work. They're examining the policies in an open forum. In fact, the county rightfully is encouraging public participation, and that, that doesn't seem to be happening in this case. It looks like many of the Gap PAC's efforts will be nullified by a lot of the proposed changes to LUDC, and a lot of people are going to be wasting a lot of time if that occurs. So, and I'll just wrap up. As you can tell, we're opposed to the changes, and years ago, I voted for the Coastal Act. And I think it's done a lot of good things, but I didn't realize it would come to this level of regulation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mills?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I'm Andy Mills, speaking for the Santa Barbara County Cattlemen's Association. Our association represents members that represent approximately 45,000 acres in the coastal zone, and we are deeply concerned about a number of the commission's proposed changes. Our biggest objection, though, is the absolute, or almost absolute, lack of public process. And when you have agency staff from Ventura and San Francisco making important land use decisions, there are going to be unintended consequences. For example, the distinction between principal uses and non-principal uses clouds and confuses longstanding policies of compatible use on agricultural lands and, in fact, reaches into the Williamson Act and our local ag preserve uniform rules. Secondly, the requirement for permits on grazing into areas that were not recently grazed basically precludes the ability to do range improvement projects because the cost of the permitting would never be offset by the increase in production that you would achieve. And so those are two examples. Fortunately, we do have a local process underway where the public has ample opportunity to participate, and that is the update of the Gaviota Coastal Plan. And I would, our association would like to see a strong recommendation from this county to wait until that process is complete, and then the Coastal Commission staff and the commission itself will have ample opportunity to weigh in. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, just a quick question of Mr. Mills. What is the projected date for that completion?
A couple of years. I'd have to ask staff. I believe it's approximately a year from now, but.
Maybe. Everything's maybe.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Brooks, I would say it's more, it's more like at least two years from now because they're just beginning to develop the plan, and then it would be subjected to environmental review and then would go through the county adoption process and be submitted to the Coastal Commission. So we're probably actually three years away from the Coastal Commission really considering it, given their timeframe.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Kaufman, Scott Kaufman?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Scott Kaufman. Madam Chair, I'm going to speak on modification 21. Is it okay to speak?
Fine, go ahead and do that, Chair.
Thank you. Again, my name is Scott Kaufman. I'm a retired battalion chief with 35 years' experience. I ran the Prevention Bureau down in Carpinteria, and I'd like to really thank the commission for really heralding and moving forward fire protection, and especially Commissioner Cooney, who's been a real partner. We really, well appreciated. And what I wanted to do is today talk about land use development code modification 21, and that was with regard to private accessways, ramps, stairways, and general access to the beach. And it's my feeling that those accessways, private or public, are critical and extremely important to us. They're utilized by the fire department, ambulance, sheriff's department, search and rescue, and everyone uses those, and they're used for beach rescues, heart attacks, medical emergencies, vessels, fires, and crimes. And those accessways, and I've been on numerous, numerous calls where we've used whatever accessway we can, we can possibly come up with to get to those people that need us in seconds. The maintenance of those accessways is real important, and I think a couple of things are going on here. Number one is, it sounds like the LUDC is going to prohibit any new accessways, which to us, whether it's private or public, is onerous and not in the public interest. And secondarily, the, the maintenance of those accessways is also going to be prohibited. And I think it's going to happen from a couple of different ways. I think a, a person that has an accessway to maintain it, it sounds like now they're going to have to go through permitting, which is going to be the coastal development permit in the hearing, and there's a potential for a public accessway requirement to that. So with that being as onerous it is and as costly it is, as it is, I think it's going to have a couple of problems. First, the accessway may be taken out by that owner. You know, he just doesn't want, doesn't want to go through the expense and that, and may take that accessway out. Or secondly, which could be a real problem, is those accessways could be abandoned, and that would have a real onerous effect. And what could happen there is if that, if that accessway is abandoned and it's not being maintained, if fire department or paramedics try to utilize that, they could get hurt or harmed. So I'd just say in conclusion that a couple of things. One is that I believe our current codes, as far as maintaining those accessways with current building code and fire code requirements, is adequate. And number two, I think if this is implemented, and I think it's just not in the public good, and in fact, I would say that the new LUDC is a threat to public safety. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Petrovich.
Madam Chair, if I could just clarify one point.
Yes, please.
In regards to Mr. Kaufman's comment, the proposed revision to the development code regarding beach accessways would only serve to restrict those that are private, such that public accessways could still be permitted and could still be maintained, but the restriction would be to not allow any new private accessways or the maintenance thereof.
Well, I took his comments to be that they use private accessways as well.
Exactly. Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Ms. Petrovich?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'm not sure where to start, but I'll start by saying, I, my name is Susan Petrovich with the law firm of Brownstein Hyatt Barber Shrek. I'm here on behalf of the Santa Barbara County Cattlemen's Association and a number of individual ranchers. I disagree with the staff report. I think that if you are considering accepting any of these changes that are, have any substance to them, you must do CEQA review. Page 24 says you, you don't need to, but I think that's a mistake because it clearly has not, you heard about the emergency access. This clearly has impacts on agriculture, and there's, that alone, it would be requiring CEQA review. I think that, or I recommend and request that you reject this package completely and keep our coastal ordinance separate. Other jurisdictions have done that. We were looking for simplicity, clarity, et cetera, through this ZORP process, and instead, what do we get? I mean, Diane alone said just trying to figure out the terminology is going to be a nightmare, so maybe we should just keep the ordinance separate. We've done it all these years. Why not? We're not, the purpose was to make things simple, and instead, we're making them more complicated. It's a horrible perversion of the ZORP purpose and has incredible unintended consequences for ag. The change of ag uses triggers an ag permit, or triggers a permit. The inclusion of agriculture as a lesser included use in the rec, I mean, in the residential and in the commercial zones and other zones, that goes away. Now you need a permit to do it. How are ranches supposed to make a living? I can tell you, it wouldn't be on cattle grazing alone, and especially if you can't do range improvements to expand your cattle grazing where it makes sense to you. So we've got ridiculous limitations that far exceed the ag preserve restrictions. The owner can't live on their ranch. They can't come live in a house on their ranch unless they're the primary operator. Now, come on. I got news for the Coastal Commission staff and for anybody else who's listening. Most coastal ranches wouldn't be what they are if it weren't for someone going somewhere else to make a living, and we will lose those if those people can't at least once in a while come live on their ranch. An appealable CDP, who can afford it for all, you saw the list of things. Who can afford that or will bother? And certainly, how can we expect farmers and ranchers to survive? They live on the thinnest profit margin of anyone. So what I see this is, is an incredible power grab, an expansion of the appeals jurisdiction to include the entire coastal zone, and it's really an insult. The county has a certified local coastal plan. The Coastal Act hasn't changed substantially during all the time that we've had all these community plans certified that had land in the coastal zone, the latest being the Toro Canyon Plan. These all included, all the permitted uses that we have, that we've shown, being shown up there, that will now no longer be permitted uses. The County of Santa Barbara, if it agrees to any of these demands, is about to forfeit its sovereign power, and the purpose of the appeals jurisdiction was to define a particularly sensitive area that everyone by mutual agreement said would have direct Coastal Commission oversight due to the appeals process. And the county could retain control in the rest of the coastal zone. That was the whole purpose of having the local coastal plan. With this proposal, virtually every discretionary decision, every discretionary decision will fall within the Coastal Commission's domain. So local authority becomes meaningless because anyone can appeal. And to Mr. Valencia's question, the application process alone becomes more complex. If you look at page 20, the italicized language, it says, "At a minimum, the application shall include all information and materials necessary for the review authorities," so that would include all information and materials necessary for the review authorities," so that would of course include our friends at the Coastal Commission staff, "to make an informed decision regarding the consistency of the application with the comprehensive plan, the local coastal program, and the regulations of this development code, of course, as amended by all of these incredible requirements." Now, I can tell you as a land use attorney that preparing an application that would satisfy these requirements would cost a bloody fortune. This is just inconceivable. So I would just ask you to say no. And I also would ask you to send this to the ag advisory committee for more detailed analysis.
I believe that they are hearing it, as is Pitt.
Well, they're hearing it this afternoon, though. You should be having their input before you even ask to provide comments.
Well, I agree, and before Pitt, but unfortunately, I think there's some other time constraints involved with this.
Well, and, and I, I think we've got a real procedural problem because they can tell you the specific impacts on individual day-to-day ag operations, and you really should have that information before you comment. So there are some things that may appear innocuous to the staff, but they aren't necessarily innocuous. And I, there's obviously time prevents me and you from going through every single detail, but this is just absurd. So I would ask you, just say no. We really don't need the Coastal Commission directing the exercise of the county's authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Petrovich. Ms. Black, would you like to comment on sort of the processing of this?
Yes, Madam Chair, I just wanted to comment that the ag advisory committee will be hearing this, this afternoon, and since they are advisory to the board and not directly to your commission, we felt that that was appropriate.
And Pitt is hearing it tomorrow?
That's correct.
Okay. And Montecito is hearing it?
Next Thursday.
Okay, and then?
And then it'll go back to the board on July 6th?
6th.
July 6th.
So we're sort of in a time crunch to get all this done. Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Van Leer?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
My speaking, my name is Paul Van Leer, I'm speaking on my own behalf today, but I am an AAC member as well as a GAVPAC member, also a director of Santa Barbara County Farm Bureau. And today, I respectfully request you to not make any action on this today because as, as staff said, that they are going to be coming before AAC this afternoon, and we, we hope that you would wait and get our recommendation before you make any action today. As far as the GAVPAC goes, at least half of our study areas in the Coastal Commission and jurisdiction, and I would also would, I don't know if we're going to have time to make a recommendation or make a comment, just so you know, I would believe that personally this would hamper our, any kind of a action we might have, having these kind of restrictions in the coastal zone, any kind of work we've been trying to do, I think our hands would be tied. So I would ask you, please, to bear that in mind on your recommendations. And as far as my personal opinion, just looking at this, you know, I have not definitely read it, but I would suggest you tell the Coastal Commission, thank you but no thank you, I think Santa Barbara County can do well on their own. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Kim Kimball, and I am chair of the GAVPAC, but I'm here speaking individually, and that brings me to my first point. The rush with which this is being ran through the county has precluded the normal sequencing of committees and other advisory groups from participating in the process, and GAVPAC will not be able to come up with any reaction to this until its meeting on June 16th. I suspect it, it will have a position on this because I fear that the, many of these changes are running counter to some of the principles which seem to be emerging in the discussions at GAVPAC. A couple of those are, there's strong sentiment for what we call the Beneficial Projects Initiative, an effort to make good restoration and conservation projects easy to do. That would now with these proposed changes be elevated to the most complex type of processing imaginable, and it'll simply kill them. The other thrust which I expect to emerge from GAVPAC will be an effort to incentivize conservation on a broader scale. There's been discussion about allowing certain uses if one puts a permanent conservation easement on their property. This is a principle which I expect us to discuss. That wouldn't be possible without the highest level of processing, that's just not going to happen. So I, I fear for my committee that our hands are going to be tied severely by these changes if they are imposed on us. And it's very disappointing to a county such as this, comprised of people who like to participate publicly and do volunteer tremendous amounts of time and effort to do so, and the county always makes a process, a, a point of achieving the best consensus it can in these processes, and instead, we're confronted with an effort by a group of people who are isolated in back rooms in the bowels of the coastal staff offices, cooking up these ideas over a three-year period and denying even commenting or conversing with our staff. That's what I heard today. I think this is atrocious, and I, I really urge you either to delay it or just reject it out of hand post haste. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'm actually going to reiterate a lot of what was said today, so I'll be very brief, but I am working with Coastal Ranch's Conservancy through a grant from the Bauer Foundation to streamline the permit process for restoration projects. And as you've heard today, every restoration project in the coastal zone, if these changes go through, will require a coastal development hearing. I have confirmed that with Coastal Commission staff. That is due to the fact that restoration is not a principally permitted use in any zone district, even the resource management zone district. So there's broad support for the streamlining. As you heard, it's, it's one of the big issues at GAVPAC, the environmental communities behind it, we've talked to staff, the board supports it, and it just seems like requiring a hearing for every restoration project, including invasive weed removal, native grass restoration, is just going completely counter to the work efforts that we're doing. So I urge you to reject this proposal, but if by chance you choose to accept some of it, what we would like seen is actual language put in that restoration projects are a principal use in every zone district, and that would, that would help us continue with our efforts to try and streamline the process for beneficial restoration projects. And then just as, as an aside, and you've heard this, but I just want to put it on the record, as a past president of the local chapter of the American Planning Association, I, I just can't, I don't find words for this process that the Coastal Commission is trying to, to shove down our throats essentially, especially in this county where we have so much public process. And the perfect example is the ZORP process, that there were no substantive changes in that process, and there was so much, so much public participation. And for them to come back with these intense changes with virtually no public process in this county is just, is just unthinkable. And on that, on that face alone, I think we should reject it. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Troutwine, please.
Madam Chair, while, while Mr. Troutwine's coming up, if I could just clarify that we're not at the point in the process of accepting or rejecting suggested modifications?
And, and maybe?
Really just providing comments to the board on the substance of the modifications.
Right, and let me just amplify on that, excuse me, Mr. Troutwine, if I can just interject here.
Take your time.
So you, what you're, because I've heard public talk about all these various organizations that are hearing this, how are you going to bring all these comments together since the planning commission isn't going to be hearing from several committees?
Madam Chair, our, our process will be to gather comments from your commission, the Montecito Planning Commission, the Agriculture Advisory Committee, and the Process Improvement Committee, and any, any other public members who wish to provide comments directly to staff. We will present those to the Board of Supervisors, and our intention is to try to at least frame the commission, Coastal Commission's action on these. Perfect comment we heard today was from Ms. Turenczak who said, you know, if, if we're going to move forward with this, please include restoration projects as a principally permitted use. That's, that's the type of comment that I think is really helpful. Conversely, you know, if you're going to move forward, please address conversion of, or intensification of agriculture with coastal development permit requirement. That's a really good comment to make, so trying to focus on those areas of, of particular concern rather than just generally reject at this point is probably more helpful.
All right, thank you. Mr. Troutwine?
Thank you.
For your patience.
Of course. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I'm Brian Troutwine with the Environmental Defense Center. And as we all know, the Coastal Commission staff suggested modifications to the county's land use development code amendments, and they did this to ensure that the LUDC is consistent with the Coastal Act. That's the sole reason that they did that, made these suggested modifications. EDC supports the suggested modifications, and we urge the county, the planning commission, to recommend to the board acceptance of these suggested modifications for the following reasons. First, the suggested modifications, including mods nine and 10, which we just went over, increase opportunities for public participation by creating more opportunities for public hearings and more opportunities for public and applicant appeals of land use decisions that affect county residents. Any way you slice that from a public participation and democratic standpoint, that's a good thing, and we support the suggested modifications for that reason amongst the others I'll go over. Again, the sole purpose of these modifications is to ensure compliance with the Coastal Act. This will better protect our coast. If it wasn't for the Coastal Act, places like Elwood and Naples, and yes, Gaviota, would be more developed, very likely much more developed. So it's important that we keep that in mind and keep in mind the role that the Coastal Act and commission plays. The Coastal Commission suggested modifications were long anticipated. We saw the background that was presented by your staff went back to 2006, but I like to go back to 2001 because that's when the Coastal Commission drafted a memo that said Santa Barbara County's local coastal plan was the third most out of date and in need of update to come into compliance with the Coastal Act of all LCPs in the state, all cities, all counties, LCPs. Third most out of date. That was 10 years ago now. This shouldn't come as a surprise to anybody who's been involved. This is long overdue, it's been long anticipated. Some may not be aware of this history, but the county was really in a sense put on notice that some changes need to occur years ago, and certainly more have come to light more recently that need to be included by the Coastal Commission suggested modifications as well. So it's not a new issue or a late hit. Now, if the Coastal Commission suggested modifications are rejected, what does that mean? The county goes back to Article II, things like the Ivy Master Plan is, is lost, at least for the time being? Would the county fall out of compliance with the state housing mandate numbers? That's some serious stuff to take on, and that's laid out in the Board of Supervisor Staff Report on this issue. That's certainly a concern. And there's much to be said for local control, but the Coastal Act provides a necessary check and balance in our government system. It was overwhelmingly approved by the voters and the state legislature to protect the public against government decisions which sometimes improperly place private interests above the public's right to a healthy coastline. So we urge you to embrace the Coastal Commission suggested modifications. And with regards to encouraging habitat restoration, we do think that should be a principally permitted use in every zone district. We want to encourage habitat restoration that is truly habitat restoration for beneficial purposes. And finally, we've heard a lot about the Gaviota PAC, EDC is heavily involved in that, and we respect the opinion of the GAVPAC members very much and their concerns certainly. We like to look at the suggested modifications as they affect the, the GAVPAC's work as important guidance to the GAVPAC for what the Coastal Commission will ultimately embrace and approve, so we think it's valuable to be going through this process at this time. There's a lot that can be learned from it. And also, the GAVPAC can certainly and will certainly make recommendations to amend the LUDC as they see fit, and can certainly recommend changes to anything the Coastal Commission comes up with now. Certainly have to battle with them over that later, but that's what the GAVPAC is there for, and we look forward to working with them on that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Before we resume, let me just do some agenda management and time management here. Mr. Lengel, will you be able to finish before noon, by noon?
It will be my goal.
It'll be your goal, okay.
Yes, I do believe so.
And I'm just, what I'd like to do is leave public comment open in case we go over another item in which the public hasn't commented on. I do have speaker slips, if anybody else who wants to say anything specifically on a specific item, you'll have that opportunity. So we will, this is how we'll proceed, and then we'll get feedback from the staff, from the commission at the end of that. Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on. Welcome, Commissioner Blau.
Thank you. My just, my, my, I'm gonna commit to sit.
10 o'clock, just so you know.
Thank you. We saw you on TV.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you. Do you have any comments or questions at the present time?
Not, not so far, no.
Okay, fine.
Thanks.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Moving on to modification 13, again deals with subdivisions. This is similar to what I reviewed with you for modification nine, where this modification again specifies the CDP requirement for subdivision lot line adjustments and voluntary mergers, and again would designate these activities as a non-principle permitted use, such that staff basically has the same concerns in regards to the requirement for additional processing costs and time due to the CDP requirement for, for these activities, and as designated as a non-principle permitted use would again require a public hearing and subject to appeal to the Coastal Commission. Any questions on 13? Modification 14 is, should be pretty familiar now because again, besides requiring that the CDP is required for all lot line adjustments, it also does revise the finding regarding environmentally sensitive habitat areas to require the development avoids impacts to such areas and buffer areas. Currently, the requirement in the Article II zoning ordinance is that the development avoids or minimizes impacts where appropriate, and the modification proposed by the Coastal Commission staff would remove that flexibility. The modification also proposes a new finding that lot line adjustments within the coastal zone will not diminish the agricultural productivity as a result of the adjustment, and like I said, again specifies the CDP is required for lot line adjustment. Staff's concern with this modification relates primarily to the elimination of flexibility in that finding as it relates to highly constrained lots, and secondly, again, the additional cost and processing time for CDPs during the public hearing due to the public hearing Modification 21 was addressed briefly by one of the speakers earlier, and this is in regards to bluff development. There are actually two portions to this modification. The first addresses structures that are allowed within the bluff setback, and just to review, the bluff setback is, the, the width of that is determined based on a 75-year average retreat rate for that particular stretch of coastline, can vary anywhere from six inches and up depending on the geologic formations. The Coastal Commission staff is proposing to impose new requirements that structural foundations are not allowed on any structures allowed within the bluff setback, that they be located a minimum of 15 feet from the bluff edge and must be moved landward or threatened by erosion. And really, staff does not have any real concerns with this first part of, of this modification. But the second part of the modification deals with beach access stairways and would revise the text of the Land Use Development Code to only allow access stairways that provide public access to the beach from bluff top properties. Currently, Article II does not contain this restriction, and staff has consistently interpreted this to allow both public and private access to, accessways to be constructed and have issued permits for private accessways, including permits for their repair. So by restricting beach access stairways to only those that provide public access, our concern is that all the existing private stairways that do exist will be rendered non-conforming as a result of this change, would not allow any new ones, and would increase the likelihood that existing stairways, if they do need to be repaired, will be de-sun out, de, the repairs will occur outside of a permit process such that they may not be actually engineered in a correct manner and may actually damage the bluffs beyond what the, what the Coastal Commission is seeking to protect. Modification 34 is in regards to sea level rise. This modification proposed by the Coastal Commission staff would add language to the Development Code requiring that the, that a coastal hazards analysis be performed for all projects that are located near the shoreline, that the analysis must consider a range of potential sea level rise scenarios at a minimum three to six feet per century for commercial and residential projects, and... and residential projects, and at least four feet, four and a half feet, rather, for energy facilities, critical facilities, or infrastructure projects. And that greater rates must be used if the project is expected to have a long economic life, that the project has few options for adaptation to sea level rise higher than the design minimum, and lastly, if the best information available supports a higher design Our comments regarding this modification is that the Coastal Commission has not provided any scientific basis for the specific requirements they seek to include in the Development Code, and that estimates should be based on the best scientific evidence available at the time of permit review. And also, by putting specific requirements into the Land Use Development Code will require in the future that should these estimates prove not to be correct and need to be revised, that the county would have to go through an LCP amendment process in order to change them. That process currently takes approximately 14 months to complete, so it can be rather That concludes all the Group 1 modifications.
Does anyone on the commission have questions or comments on the Group 1? No? Okay, go ahead and continue on to Group 2.
Moving on to Group 2, and again, these are modifications where the county suggested text revisions to the Coastal Commission in order to clear up some processing conundrums, and the Coastal Commission did not agree with those revisions. The first is in regards to modification number 3, which deals with appeals in the coastal zone. The primary purpose of this modification is rather benign and just seeks to revise the county LUDC so that the language correctly reflects that of a recent amendment to Article 2 that was made regarding appeals processes that was submitted to the Coastal Commission in 2006 but wasn't actually certified by the Coastal Commission until March of 2008. In the interim, the county LUDC was adopted by the county and sent to the Coastal Commission for certification, so you have this overlap of time between a amendment that changed the language of the, in regards to appeals in Article 2. When we do the Land Use Development Code, we sought to pull that, the existing Article 2 language forward into the code to minimize any changes, but as language was revised later on by the Coastal Commission. So you have this overlap in processes resulting in what was adopted by the county not entirely reflecting the certified language as adopted by the Coastal Commission. So again, the primary purpose of this modification, and the next one will be to conform those two together. This amendment also combined the processing of CDPs with their companion conditional use permits and development plans, and the goal of this was to minimize the number of projects that could be, or the number of permits that could be appealed to the Coastal Commission for the same project. Originally, a CUP was approved, and then later on, a CDP was approved. Both of those permits gave an agreed person an opportunity to appeal that project all the way to the Coastal Commission. By combining the two together, this was collapsing into one opportunity. This modification, however, does have direct bearing on how the county processes amendments to approved conditional use permits and development plans. Currently, these amendments are under the jurisdiction of the director, do not require a public hearing, and if they are approved, then a follow-up CDP is approved to permit the actual construction allowed by that amendment to the development plan or CUP. The modification is proposed by the Coastal Commission would require the processing of a CDP with a public hearing for any amendments to conditional use permits and for amendments to development plans that would be appealable to the Coastal Commission. We tried to work with the Coastal Commission staff to provide an alternate method that would not require a public hearing in all cases by incorporating a waived hearing process, which we have done successfully in other avenues and amendments to the county Development Code. However, this was not accepted by the Coastal Commission staff as they feel that any change that is allowed through an amendment process is too great and is too different than the project that was originally approved, and thus, that change needs to undergo a public hearing.
Do you know, just off the top of your head, how many, in these particular categories, how many folks have requested a hearing?
For the recent amendments where we provide the waived hearing process, I don't know of any that have occurred.
Okay.
There's been an existing waived hearing process for coastal development permits that sometimes we do get requests for hearing, but primarily, you know, the waived hearing process is reserved for fairly benign stuff.
Right.
So we don't get those requests very often.
Okay, thank you.
Whoops. So again, regarding modification 3, if the modification is accepted and certified by the Coastal Commission, this will require an additional public hearing for any amendment that essentially is for the same project that was originally approved through the parent conditional use permit or the development plan, and this will increase the processing time and cost to the applicant. Modification number 5 is actually very similar to the previous modification number 3. Again, the primary purpose of this is to conform the language of the Development Code to the language of the certified amendment regarding noticing that was certified by the Coastal Commission, again, in March of 2008. Again, because of the overlap and submission of the different amendments, we have the minor non-alliance or non-alignment of the language as adopted, and this would conform those two together. This amendment, again, combined the processing of CDPs with the CUPs and development plans to reduce the number of appeal opportunities to the Coastal Commission. Prior to this amendment, however, taking effect in March of 2008, there were a number of CUPs and development plans that were approved without the requirement that a CDP be approved at the same time. And so our concern was that because of the situation, which it then required that a follow-up CDP be approved by the county, we, in the Development Code, retained the language from Article 2, actually, a certified by the Coastal Commission that provided for a different noticing process for these follow-up CDPs. This modification would delete those special noticing procedures, however, as the Coastal Commission staff is concerned that there would be some residual confusion as to whether or not there was the need to actually process a CDP with the conditional use permit or the development plan, and it was inconsistent with the goal of making sure that those two permits are processed together. Again, we provided text to the Coastal Commission clarifying that these noticing procedures were only to be used for projects approved prior to March of 2008, but this was not accepted by the Coastal Commission staff. And so basically, for any remaining follow-up CDPs that still are required to be issued for projects approved before March of 2008, we'll have to use a noticing process that's really not incorporated into our certified code. These last slides will go very quickly. Group 3 modifications are really minor clarifications, cleanups, and corrections. These language corrections are necessary so that the county LUDC tracks the language of the Coastal Act more closely. Corrections are required so that the county LUDC correctly reflects the language of recent amendments to Article 2, especially in regards to noticing and appeals, and corrects minor errors, omissions, and section references that were made when the coastal, when the land use and development codes were being adopted. So in regards to Group 3 modifications, basically, we don't have any concerns regarding these modifications, and will serve to clean up our development code. Group 4 are beneficial modifications. These were amendments to the county land use and development code that were adopted by the county after the Development Code was submitted to the Coastal Commission for certification. Coastal Commission has agreed to include these as part of this certification process, and these amendments are in regards to recent process improvement, amendments that were adopted in 2008 regarding overall sign plans, subject systems and special problems areas, solar energy systems permitting, special care facility and time extensions. This also includes modification 18 within the Coastal Commission staff report, and this modification serves to correct some inadvertent errors that were made by the county staff in drafting the county LUDC and the ultimate adoption by the county Board of Supervisors. And also, they've included, as modification 25, the economic hardship time extensions that was recently approved, recommended for approval by your commission and adopted by the Board of Supervisors as well, that provides a second time extension process for people who are, due to economic situation, cannot proceed with their permits. So in regards to the Group 4 modifications, we certainly support these as they will save the county fiscal resources, as we won't have to process these as separate amendments to the certified LCP, and will allow the amendments to take effect much more quickly. So where do we go from here? As was mentioned earlier, we will be going to the Ag Advisory Committee later on today to review the recommended modifications with them, not the entire package. We're trying to keep it aimed strictly at what would be the main areas that would impact agriculture. June 10th, we'll be making basically the same presentation as we did today to the Montecito Planning Commission. We go back to the Board of Supervisors on July the 6th, and then in mid-August, the Coastal Commission hearing, again, scheduled for San Luis Obispo. The board may either accept all the modifications as approved by the Coastal Commission or reject them. It's one or the other. There's no in-between. If the board does not accept the approved modifications, then Article 2 will remain as the implementation portion of the county's local coastal plan. Any recent amendments to the county LUDC that have been processed that have effect in the coastal zone will have to be reprocessed as amendments to Article 2, and these include the Eastern Gaviota Valley Residential Design Guidelines, the Alavista Master Plan, Santa Barbara Ranch, the process improvements I mentioned previously, and as well as the time extensions allowed due to economic hardship considerations.
So, Mr. Lengel, you indicated in your first bullet that it's either one or the other. There's nothing in-between. So the board couldn't come up with something else saying something in-between in some of these, or, I mean, I can't believe it's just, it's black and white. There's no gray.
Madam Chair, if the board wanted to address the suggested modifications in a different way and propose that, they could.
Yes.
But it'd be resubmitted as a new amendment to the LCP.
Oh, I see. Okay. Okay. Any other questions by Commissioner? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, I thought earlier, when we began our discussion today, you said that all the comments from the different groups, you know, would, to include the Board of Supervisors, would go to the Coastal Commission staff? Or is what happens after this July meeting?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Brooks, maybe I can clarify, because I think this last slide's a bit confusing. This is the next step after the Coastal Commission hearing. So between now and the board's hearing on July 6th, we'll be gathering the comments. We'll provide those to the Board of Supervisors, and then we would expect that the Board of Supervisors would do a couple of things. They may direct us to talk to Coastal Commission staff about some of the most significant concerns. They may direct us to write a letter to the Coastal Commission itself requesting that they change some of the suggested modifications. They may appoint members of the board to go and testify before the Coastal Commission. They might do all three. But that's what we expect to happen as a result of the July board hearing, and then we'll go to the Coastal Commission hearing presumably in August and present whatever the Board of Supervisors directs us to present, and then, once the commission acts, whatever suggested modifications that they adopt would then go through this process, where we'd come back to the Board of Supervisors in a public hearing where they would consider whether they should accept or reject the suggested ones. Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would think there would be a recommendation of some sort that Group 3 and 4 really are not a problem, so our whole thing focuses on 1 and 2, and then to the severity of 1 and 2, we should probably be some weighting factor. There are some things that they want that we don't want but aren't really that important that, you know, and likewise, and probably you end up with basically this Group 1 that have the most significant authority changes to the county plan, and that's probably where the focus will be, I would think. Is that not what might end up happening?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Valencia, I think that's an expectation.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney?
Just a question. Ms. Black, does the Board of Supervisors have as one of the alternatives, direction to withdraw the review process as has been done in this case in October, I believe, of '09, so that it would permit the opportunity to really deal with the Coastal Commission staff on what we're identifying as some of the most crucial defects in the current proposal?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Cooney, they certainly could do that. I think we're pretty much at the end of the road with Coastal Commission staff. I mean, we spent from October, October, August?
August.
August through December, essentially, and maybe even a little bit into the new year, with the commission staff getting to this point, and I think their position has pretty substantially hardened. So, yes, the board could do that, but I'm not sure that it would have the intended effect of making the commission staff move much further.
Well, I think that what's happened so far is that the staff has, in all good faith, attempted to argue what they think is best for the county, but the Coastal Commission staff and the Coastal Commission have not heard from the highest authority of the county. And it just seems to me that rather than hearing that these are rejected and we're going to go look at processing all of our individual accomplishments over the last several years and alienating a significant portion of our most important current work in terms of the Gaviota Coast, that it might be helpful at that point to say, "Look, we have to find some compromise on these hard issues." And all I'm saying is, we need to exhaust all areas of negotiation before the conclusion is reached that we reject these out of hand and we've got essentially many years of lost effort.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Cooney, I certainly take your point. I guess my only concern is, it seems to me it's more an issue between the Board of Supervisors and the Coastal Commission itself, and so the board may wish to provide testimony to the Coastal Commission that says, "Here are the issues that we're still concerned about, and we don't want you to take action, and we want you to provide direction to your staff on these." That, to me, seems like a more workable position than simply saying, "Well, we want to just withdraw it from consideration before the commission," because I'm not sure the commission staff feels that they can go much further without some direction from the commission itself. So that might be the, a different way of getting to that same point of negotiation.
Well, given the short time that this commission has had to wrestle with these issues, I think we have heard representative testimony from critical portions of our constituency, and I And I guess it would be helpful to staff at this point if we offer specific comments regarding what we understand of the proposal to date, and at least you'll have something to go to the board with that reflects the opinion of the planning commission.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Cooney, I think that would be helpful. But perhaps we should turn back to public comment just?
I was just going to do that and then bring it back to the commission. So if there's anybody else in the audience who would like to speak on those modifications that weren't included in the first group, and I already have your speaker slip, Ms. Petrovich, if you didn't previously speak, you can give me a speaker slip, but.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There were just a couple of things I wanted you to be aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Modification thirteen, which has to do with subdivisions, re divisions, and voluntary mergers. Voluntary mergers is what I wanted to focus on, because about two years ago, I assisted the YMCA and Montecito Union School District in what was a pretty complex land swap in order to allow the YMCA to have the property on its side of San Ysidro Road, and the school would have the lot that was right next door to it that was under the YMCA's ownership. And in order to accomplish that, and of course, there was a time crunch because there was an option issue, in order to accomplish that, we had to do a voluntary merger. And if we hadn't been able to do that without going through a long permit process, that would not have happened. Of course, if that school were in an ag zone, it would have had to shut down or couldn't have expanded, but that's another question. The point is that adding another layer of complexity would have prevented what was a very good thing for the public. As to the access stairways, one thing the Coastal Commission is overlooking, of course, is requiring people to have their private access ways either be public or abandoned, is that there is no, in most of these neighborhoods, there's no room for public parking. So there is no way you could accommodate the public, and that's just absurd. The modification thirty-four about the sea level rise, you know, you don't have to be close to the coast in order for a six-foot sea level rise to impact your property. And as we've seen, places like Padaro Lane periodically suffer very significant damage because they are at a very low sea level. Now, this would, of course, apply to rebuilding as well, so you would go through a horrendous process under this proposed, quote, "minor" change from their perspective. But then so would other people who are further back from the coast than Padaro Lane. And then this whole thing about the appeals, the staff worked very hard to try to, again, simplify life for people so that they didn't go through multiple appeal processes on the same project. I had a project in the appeals zone, or appeal jurisdiction, that went all the way through the, through the planning commission, this is a B A R approval, planning commission and the Coastal Commission on the B A R approval, then it came back and went through the same process with the C D P just because the next-door neighbor didn't want them to remodel their house. And that is the kind of thing we then tried to change the ordinances to avoid, and here we are coming back around trying to recreate that process. I think, oh, modification twenty-three suggests that a development agreement should become tantamount to an amendment to the local coastal plan? That's just absurd. But that's what it says. And then adopting the Coastal Commission's glossary, I'm sorry, but I think we ought to rely on our own glossary. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else before I close the public comments portion? Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for any, their comments.
Are these our final comments on it?
Mm-hmm, final comments.
Well, I think that we need to try to resolve this by identifying each issue in Group One and Group Two, and there are some issues that we interpret as mandatory by the Coastal Commission, some that we interpret as maybe required, and some that we interpret as desired. Those three levels tell the severity of the things that they want based on our interpretation, and I think they should present it in the easiest format so that the board of supervisors can look at them very quickly and identify them with having to go through what we tried to go through in this, you know, you just can't, we got this for a week, and the board of supervisors really don't have time to go through this type of thing. I think Mr. Lengel has done a good job in his presentation, but it's still rather complex, and I think it needs to be identified very quickly and formatted so that they can see it easily as, by our interpretation again, which is the mandatory that they feel and so and so, and then we give our, or then the board of supervisors can give their discretion on which of those things they will negotiate the best result for all of us, because we have to remember that the people that are going to be affected by this are not the planning commission, are not the board of supervisors, are not the Coastal Commission, but all those people out there on that Gaviota Coast, you know. So, presentation of the format to the board of supervisors, I think, is one of the most important things so they can deal with it. Thank you.
Commissioner Brooks?
Okay, thank you. I think this morning's exercise, you know, shows us why the coastline in the Santa Barbara County is probably, you know, one of the most beautiful and well-preserved coastlines. I think we've done a good job so far. But again, it's taken decades of, you know, public input. And I so appreciate everyone coming today, I appreciate the letters received, because certainly for me, it gives, puts things in historical context, and you are the experts, and certainly, public input is paramount. That being said, I'll just go down, you know, some of the particular modifications and, you know, Pro-Con, I guess, Group One, I think that's, you know, where our concerns are going to be. Regarding Modification Thirty-four, the sea rise levels, I, I'm not, you know, I am okay with that. I think twenty-one, Modification Twenty-One regarding the stairways, the gentleman who spoke today, you know, who has, Mr. Kaufman, you know, brought up excellent points, and these have to be included in some, you know, we have it here today in the public comment. But again, I'm just wondering, you know, where the Coastal Commission staff has come up with these problems? And we want to be consistent, and whatever we can do to be consistent, you know, with, you know, the policies of the Coastal Commission are important. And I, consistency is very, as I say, I think is very important, because there are some times in this county where I feel my coastline has been protected. There are other times in this county where I've been real concerned. And I don't, I think anyone living here, you know, who appreciates the beauty and the viability of our coastline, I don't want it to be dependent on, let's say, the vagaries of elections, politics, et cetera. And I think that being consistent and with our policies and with what the Coastal Commission, you know, is saying, maybe this is where they're coming from. You know, I keep wondering, why are they so worried? You know, why are they coming down so hard on us? And I really feel that some of these modifications are extremely difficult. And, you know, are these policies, you know, throughout the state? I guess they're telling us they are. But that being said, you know, the whole idea of doing this without our public input, it's not the way we do things here, and I wouldn't think, you know, many other communities do the same thing. I believe the letter, Mr. Hill's commentary, and from the Coastal Ranch's conservancy, that really was very telling for me. I think this whole idea that, you know, here they're out, they're doing restoration, environmentally beneficial projects, I think whatever language we do come up with, you know, that has to be included, and I think that's already been stated, and I hope that is done. Looking at Mr. Troutland, he had sent in the letter, and again, this is when he mentioned some history here, you know, with Elwood Mesa, he mentioned some history about Naples. You know, those types of changes and, you know, working with the Coastal Commission, I thought was, you know, historically, that was very important. And however, then I look at what we have come up with as far as the Isla Vista Master Plan, Santa Barbara Ranch, process improvement, I hope that whatever language we send to them ultimately says, you know, this is a result of a public process, it's very important. The Gaviota PAC, I know they're doing wonderful work, they're sitting down, you have people from different groups making compromises, making suggestions, I mean, they are the landowners, and, you know, they have certainly, you know, been wonderful caretakers of the land, and, you know, I don't know, hearing that it's going to be three years down the line, I don't know if we can, you know, wait that long, because all these other improvements that have gone before are waiting, you know, for this, you know, for this agreement. The idea of not being able to do range improvements, that certainly, that language needs to be included. I mean, that's, we're here month after month, you know, trying to preserve agriculture, you know, and they have to know that is one of our priorities in this county. So hopefully, whatever language comes up, you know, will reflect that. I know out, especially in the Hollister Ranch, I took a tour when I was first named to the commission, and they have wonderful projects there, and to think that, you know, this, these new policies might eliminate, you know, the possibility of something. They have to get grants to pay for this, and they've done a good job getting grants. So hopefully, anything that, you know, comes as a way of improving, you know, the land will be accepted. Let's see, just looking at the different, yeah, we know what's going to be, you know, Modification Nine, Ten, Thirteen, Fourteen, we have to make sure that these are not as, I would hope, not as stringent and allow for more flexibility. The allowable uses, we hear it also, you know, these, the people who are running the ag operations, you know, they're the experts if they need things. We went through this whole thing with the, you know, the ag permitting, streamlining, and I think that document or, you know, the philosophy that went into that and the outcome of that needs to be shared with the Coastal Commission staff, so everything is included, for starter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would, like my fellow commissioners, I could spend a lot of time making comments, but I think we're just at the beginning of a long process, and what I would say to staff is that, in my view, the fundamental policies of the Coastal Commission, the reason that the Coastal Commission was formed was to preserve the quality of the coast for all people who either live in or visit California. And I don't think any of us disagree with that basic policy, and improvement of access, public access to the coast is a laudable objective that we look to the Coastal Commission to protect. Having said that, when it gets down to specific proposals that we've wrestled with and about which we've learned, such as overregulation of agriculture actually leading to destruction of agriculture, it seems that there's a missing link there. If we have a full-on hearing when a rancher chooses either to build a house on his ranch or change from, let's say, grazing to grape harvesting or some other crop that succeeds on the coast, it does seem to me that the alternative decision of abandoning the agricultural pursuit is realistic. And that's the real threat here, is that we're talking about increasing the processing and therefore the expense of any kind of change. And it's those particular proposals that I would focus the board's attention on. We actually are in a position to judge, I think, because of the projects we've seen over the years, that you can go too far. And our whole effort with regard to agricultural permit streamlining was to compromise between concerns with the environment and with the larger community, and balancing those against the needs of agriculture. So I would say the Coastal Commission needs to be where we have been in terms of exposure to those issues. I'm not sure the board is the best, the best representative to send there, but I'm hopeful the agricultural community will band together and give the Coastal Commission the same input they've given us, not just today, but over the past several months. Then they'll really be in a position to say, "Well, maybe we don't have to have a public hearing process each time a rancher goes to change crops." But short of that, I certainly have problems with what's proposed. Not all of it, certainly, but the goal would be to simplify process, not increase it. And I think what's being proposed here, if we allow it to be adopted, and I'm not sure our choice is very great, but if it is adopted, I think could have dire consequences.
Certainly, this has been a daunting challenge in both reviewing and understanding this material, but it has been very helpful to hear from the public. These are the folks who would be and could be affected by the proposed changes. So I appreciate your letters and your public testimony today. I think it interesting that the way the Coastal Commission has proceeded in making and abbreviating the public process is, everything that this county has tried to do is to encourage the public process in many of these issues and to streamline it and make it more effective. So I find that sort of interesting, that they've circumvented what they believe is important in hearing from the public by increasing the public process. Not, that is not to say that we don't have an effective public process, because we went through so many of these hearings to make sure that it was effective for our public. I think that staff has, other than what my fellow commissioners have said, I think it is important that we do get the restoration projects, and I think that you have that down as, in your list, Mr. Lengel, that that is important, that they be considered principal permitted uses. Otherwise, it's probably a hindrance to perform these kinds of projects. Other than that, I don't really have any other comment. Commissioner Blau, do you have anything that you would like to?
I sure do, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
First off, let me say that for the most part, I agree with staff's recommendations and the comments they made and things they intend to bring forward. For me, this is an example of, I will agree with Commissioner Cooney that the Coastal Commission may be a well-intended organization. It goes to show you how bad it can be sometimes when you don't have any way to get to the elected officials when they make a poor decision. I mean, everything we do as a planning commissioner, our staff, is eventually appeal to the board, and they have the ultimate authority to make the decision, and they're elected by the people in the county. As I understand it, Coastal Commission, they're appointed. And I agree with Commissioner Brown that they're not that concerned about what the public input is, they make the decision as they see fit, and they're not really accountable to anybody other than who appointed them. So I think it's a really very poor process in structure. Hopefully, the board is able to sit down with them and can negotiate out those things that are most important to the members of this county. But for me, it's a real reason that Coastal Commission needs to be revamped and be redone. Again, I just can't, I can't tell you how much I don't appreciate giving a bureaucrat that's appointed the ultimate authority, and I really detest the idea that some property, poor property owner has to go through our process, has to go through their process. If the two processes don't come to the same conclusion, they're stuck and can't go anywhere. And again, all the work we've done on Isla Vista and other projects may be for naught, and that's just one complete waste of money and time. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Well, with that, I'm going to conclude this agenda item and
Well, with that, I'm going to conclude this agenda item and Mr. Lengel or Ms. Black, if you have any, any thoughts? I mean, I think you, you hear what the commission sentiments are and you're certainly going to get other bodies, their thoughts as well. And I wouldn't be surprised if we didn't hear fairly common sentiments among all of them. So with that, unless we have any other short comments because we're way behind today in our agenda, I'm going to, and I think, do we have any, any specific thing that we need to do other than just provide comments?
No, Madam Chair. I mean, there's, there's no required action by the commission other than to provide comments and we'll certainly try to reflect your comments to the board in an appropriate way.
All right. So with that, then we're going to take a lunch break and how about if we're back at 12:30? So that will give us about 35 minutes. And this will be for agenda item number two. Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of Robin Unander, attorney for the appellant in Nicole Anter, to consider the appeal case number 10, APL 10, appeal filed on March 11, 2010, of the zoning administrator's decision to approve the Hassan Residential Units project, case numbers 09CUP49 and 09CDP97, and to determine that the previously certified EIR prepared for the Isla Vista Master Plan 03EIR8 is adequate environmental review for this project pursuant to SEQA Statute Section 21090B.
Okay, thank you. Ex parte and site visit disclosure? Commissioner Cooney.
No, it's okay. Just had my mouth full.
Sorry.
I visited the site when it was first on our agenda. I'm sure Mr. Briggs will go through the history. I didn't go back for this week.
Thank you. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes, thank you, Chair Brown. I visited the site yesterday and I did have a phone conversation with Ms. Unander.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I also visited the site.
And I did as well and I've had no ex parte. So, Mr. Briggs to you. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Blau, thank you.
My client went to Maria Hospital for the weekend, so, no.
That's not good. Anyway, all right, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I would like to give you a quick presentation of the Anter appeal of the Hassan Residential Units project. The project site is located at 6546 Pardal Road in the heart of the commercial core of downtown Isla Vista. The site is zoned C2, general commercial, would be rezoned to CM, community mixed use as part of the Isla Vista Master Plan. The site is currently developed with an existing commercial building. You can see, you can see here in the photo that it's two stories. The ground floor is used as a restaurant, the Pasta House, and the upstairs is currently used for restaurant storage. This building was previously used by the Isla Vista Foot Patrol for their substation here in Isla Vista. And the Foot Patrol would carry out their ongoing daily duties on the ground floor and then they had the second floor set up for overnight stay. So the second floor of this building is pretty much already set up to, for residential use and the project proposes to convert the upstairs storage use to two new studio units. Here's another picture of the site. The site is very small in size. It's about 5,000 square feet gross when you take away the easement along Pardal Road. And the picture that you see here, the curb cut here in the foreground, essentially if you take that line straight back down the, the project site, that is the property line. So this driveway here is actually on the adjacent property and there is an access easement over this portion of their property to get into the commonly used parking lot. The, and here, here's another view of the parking lot. You can see there's 10 existing spaces out there, including a handicap space, and there are a couple of tandem spaces back here. There's four tandem spaces in the rear of the structure.
I think you mean two tandem spaces. That would be four, four spots.
Two tandem spaces for a total of four parking spaces.
Right, okay, thank you.
The project itself, the conversion of the storage space to the residential units would require four parking spaces, two spaces for each unit. The existing restaurant use requires two spaces for a total of six on this building and we have 10 existing spaces on the, on the site. The neighboring parcel to the west, which you saw in the picture, the blue building, it's the graphic art copying business, that parcel has a recorded parking agreement with the subject parcel for use of four parking spaces. So the extra four spaces are dedicated on a permanent basis to the graphic art business. And historically, that hasn't really been a problem. The neighboring parcel also has a, a second recorded parking easement and this particular easement does not describe a specific number of spaces. It, it describes an area on the project site that could be used for parking by the graphic art business. And this was recorded more recently in 2005. So here is a site plan, shows the existing building there in black and then of course the parking spaces. The parcel is outlined here in yellow. The 10 parking spaces are located here in blue. And the parking easement area is outlined here in red. And you can see, in my opinion, this easement was not drawn up or, or designed with much thought because much of the easement area is taken up by Pardal Road and the adjacent sidewalk, leaving the easement holder with very limited space for parking, half of which is taken up by handicap space and outdoor dining area. So I'm struggling to understand what the reasoning was behind recording that easement. Regardless, the property owner, in working with him through the permit process, was willing to observe the neighbor's right to the historic four spaces. So because we had 10 site, onsite spaces, six were required for the project. We had an extra four. He was very open and willing to the ongoing use of those four spaces by the neighbor. So it seemed as though when we headed to the zoning administrator that the parking issues had been worked out. And then of course, we, we got an appeal from the appellant, so. And when you read through the appellant's appeal package, it basically points out that these easements exist. It states that parking is a concern, but it doesn't really elaborate on any specific issues. And I did reach out to the appellant and her attorney and I tried to work with them to flush out more specifics on, on what the appeal issues were, knowing that she had continued ongoing use with the four spaces. And through the process, they were not really able to elaborate on any specific issues that staff could address. As a condition, the project is consistent with the comprehensive plan, including the coastal land use plan, the Galeta Community Plan and the Isla Vista Master Plan and the coastal zoning ordinance. Environmental review of the project was covered under SEQA, under Statute Section 21090B, which says that redevelopment plan is deemed a single project in the EIR for the Isla Vista Master Plan because it's a redevelopment plan, also covers specific follow-on projects such as this. And staff's recommendation is to deny the appeal, make the required findings for the project specified in Attachment A of the ZA action letter dated March 3, 2010, and, and as revised by staff's June 2 memo, which you received this morning, including the California Environmental Quality Act findings, determine that the previously certified EIR prepared for the Isla Vista Master Plan is adequate environmental review for this project pursuant to SEQA Statute Section 21090B and grant de novo approval of case numbers 09CUP49 and 09CDP97, subject to the conditions included in Attachments 2 and 3 of the staff report.
Thank you. Any commissioners' questions? No questions of Mr. Briggs. Okay, then I will open it up for the appellant presentation. Is, is the appellant here?
Madam Chair, the appellant is not here. And Erin had indicated that he had tried to make contact over the last week or two and she's just...
Not here.
Not here and her attorney couldn't find her either.
Okay, so then we'll go on to the applicant. If he, if he or she wishes to make a presentation.
Thank you, Chair Brown. Commissioners Keith Rivera, project architect. I think Erin's summation pretty much covers it all. I think the bottom line is the appellant had four parking spaces, use of four parking spaces onsite prior to the project. They have four spaces now in virtually the same location. No change to the access to those spaces, so I...
Okay.
...met all laws.
All right, thank you. Are, do we have any public comment, Commissioner Brooks?
No, we have no public comment. So with no appellate rebuttal, no, and I can open it to commissioners and questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Blau.
Yeah, I just have one question of the applicant. Are those four spaces designated and signed or are they just four of the 10?
The four spaces for the adjacent property are from the accessible space over. Currently, they're, the neighboring business has some signs advertising their business there, but I don't believe though they are designated for that adjacent property.
But could they be designated? Could he put a sign up that's there if that's for his, for his patrons' parking only so that there's not, so it's not a shared parking arrangement?
We offered in the kind of negotiation back and forth with the neighbor that we would allow these signs to remain on the property, but we would relocate them onto the building because their present location will be an obstruction for a pedestrian path. But, you know, conceivably, the spaces could be designated and I would have to defer to my client.
Sir, we don't mind to post a parking signs specified for, for graphic arts, the business next door. But what they have now, it's advertisement signs that I cannot advertise my own business while they can advertise on the entire building their business. I don't mind the parking sign to be posted for their easement area that is signed by their agreement when they sold the building. I have no problem with that.
Okay, so my, my other question for Erin is, does our, does our conditions of approval kind of adequately address that issue that the parking spaces are to be designated exclusively as opposed to shared? And then my other question is, how do we do a restaurant at one's parking space per 500 square feet? Do I get that right? Is that what the real, I mean, that's not typical, I don't think, for restaurants.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Blau, let me address the restaurant parking first and I'll move on to the second issue. There is a provision under the C2 Zone District that allows for the director to lower the parking requirement to one space per 750 square feet of restaurant space. And the existing restaurant is about 1,300 square feet. So 750 times two would be about 1,500 square feet. And that provision is available when there is a public parking lot within 750 feet of the project site. And in this case, we did approve, or your commission did approve the public parking lot right down the street at the corner of Pardal and and Barker Del Del Mar. So the area does have adequate public parking and the, in our staff report, we elaborated that the director was comfortable with that reduction in the parking requirement. As for the dedication of specific spaces, this site has functioned for many, many years with this parking agreement. The agreement was recorded in 1983, so it's been 27 years. The site has essentially functioned without specified parking spaces for that time and the applicant did not want to dedicate specific spaces to the neighbor as part of this project. So I respected that as part of the planning process. Conceivably, that is, that could be done, that could be a condition of approval. However, we don't see a real need to specify those spaces at this time as the site has functioned very well historically without it. And one more thought would be that by dedicating specific spaces to either business, one of them gets the handicap space and, and that makes use of the handicap space a little awkward in that instance. So staff was inclined to allow the, the flexibility to continue in the parking situation.
Okay, well, I have a small problem with that only in that although it may work well for the current owners, I think you have to be more careful and talk about what happens when there are subsequent owners in the property. Seems to me you could designate three parking spaces, let the handicap float, and you solve the problem. My concern is, is that, you know, it changes ownerships and, and the new owner doesn't agree to do the parking the way it's done for the last 27 years. And now if you have shared parking, that would probably not work. Because I could see the restaurant owner using all the parking spaces or his patrons using all of them, not providing any for the other business. So I would be much more comfortable if there was a condition that the, that the applicant designate the three parking spaces that are not handicapped for the other business and the handicap is just used by either business.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes, thank you. I have to say, because I drove into this parking lot yesterday and this is a great picture, but I'd say it somewhat does not reflect how tight it is. I was parked alongside of the print, yes, that, there you go. I pulled up in back, not knowing that, okay, here are the four, you know, the two tandem spaces on the left for the, for that, for the property behind the print shop. So I pulled my car right alongside and there were some people in the restaurant and they were very polite, they were coming out and they were going to allow me to back up and this is a very tight situation. I'm, I think I'm in somewhat of agreement with Commissioner Blau on this because if you have, if you're going to be putting two units over this restaurant, perhaps again, if that's part of their, going to be part of their lease agreement or whatever, maybe somebody could, you know, how are they going to, I would just see, let's say if somebody goes off to work, those spaces would be used by people coming into the restaurant or the print shop. So you say the print shop people can use those spaces now also? Or it's kind of open? I'm just thinking if the spaces in the back of the building are empty, you know, let's say if people go off to work and there's four tenant, you know, spaces, you know, will people like myself, I, I might have pulled into one of those spaces and how to, I guess, will the tenants be aware that, you know, when they leave for the day, their spaces would be used, let's say, by the businesses? I don't know how you can solve that problem, but it seems to me, and again, it's so tight. Once you're back there, you know, you have to do three-point turn, four-point turns. It's very difficult to get out.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I have, let me explain this just a little bit more in detail. The four spaces in the back are intended to be used for the residential units. The, the tandem spaces are clearly better used for the residents of those two units. So that leaves us with six other spaces, one of which is a handicap space. And because the appellant is not here to provide her input on designating these spaces, if, if you were to choose certain spaces for her use going into the future, I could see her getting really upset possibly at whatever configuration you come up with, especially if she gets the handicap space. Or if you, if we're to somehow implement three spaces and have the handicap floating for dual use, it makes it very confusing. And given how upset she got about this project being approved in the first place, I could see her getting very upset with any kind of specific parking arrangement different than what's gone on the last 27 years on the site.
Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Frankly, I'm not too concerned about whether the appellant gets upset or not. The question is how will this tiny, tiny parking area best function? And I reached the conclusion that you just explained, Mr. Briggs, that if any of, of these spaces gets designated, it ought to be those for the residents, not for the adjacent graphic arts building. And I went back and looked again at the 1983 easement agreement and it says that... it says that this agreement is granted to the owners to provide the required parking for a copying and duplicating business. And it even says, in the event that business use is ceased, then the parking agreement becomes null and void. And so I think the purpose of getting those spaces was to comply with the county requirements for parking for the graphic arts business. As long as there are four spaces to which the graphic arts business has a right, then I think the county compliance is satisfied. And we, as the planning commission, should only be concerned with those issues. As between the two owners, if one attempts to take over all of the use, or have only exclusive use, then I think it is going to be a problem, because they have different hours. The restaurants open later than the graphic arts business, quite probably. So, you know, I'd be inclined not to require the designation of any spaces for the graphic arts business, but to leave it to the two businesses to work out any problems that might occur in the future.
Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pardon me. During my site visit, I also drove in, and I didn't have any trouble parking, driving in and out. But I used to have a Lincoln Town Car, and I can say that if I drove my Lincoln Town Car in there, I'd probably have difficulty. But with a normal SUV, I didn't have any problem. I also noticed that the reproduction unit there has four parking spaces in back, so I guess when they go to work, they can park back there. There's four that they can park in tandem, as Mr. Briggs indicated, right across, so it doesn't seem like a major problem. Another thing I noticed is that the restaurant is typical of most of the little restaurants there, in that people either walk over or ride their bikes. I've made two site visits to the place. I always make one in the morning and one in the afternoon type, to get a look of the road situation. And I didn't see any problem at all. In the morning, there were, I think there was one blue vehicle parked there. But in the afternoon, I think there were two vehicles parked in there, and that's all. There were bikes in front, and so on. But I didn't see any major problem.
You know, I guess my concern about what Commissioner Blau is suggesting is that any patron coming to either building would think that those four spaces would be for the exclusive use of the copying and printing. In which case, if there were no patrons using any of those spaces, then they would think, well, I can't park here. So I think this sort of shared arrangement is really the best, is which Mr. Briggs is describing. I do think that designating the parking spaces in the back for the occupants of the second floor would be good. You could say these are restricted at certain hours, so if people during the day wanted to park there, they could. But otherwise, that would be my thoughts on that. And, you know, like Isla Vista, I walked to this space. I parked some distance and walked, and there were parking spaces there. Not all the tandem spaces were filled. People come on foot, on bike. That parking lot, that wonderful parking lot that the county paid for, there was, it's a 45-space parking lot. There was one vehicle in that parking lot. What a shame. So we really don't need any parking here, because we've got one, a lovely parking lot down the street, anyway.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, Commissioner Blau.
One more comment. I did not catch Commissioner, the easement expiring or being only with the property owner. What happens when that business does change business? Do we now have a building there that doesn't meet the required parking standard at all? Because once this business changes, do we have a building that could have no parking, other than the public parking?
Mr. Briggs.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Blau, at the time that business changed, they would have to get a new use permit, and the parking, the required parking would be reviewed at that time. They do have four spaces behind in tandem. And if the four spaces did not satisfy that business's request, they would have to seek parking either next door with this site, or somewhere else.
And so can they buy parking through our, as long as, what I'm concerned with is having a building in the future that can't be used, because they can't meet any of the requirements to provide parking. If you could tell me that there is some way to provide parking, not using the four spaces that are, as part of the easement, I'm okay with it. I mean, if they can buy parking in the parking structure, or like you can do in Isla Vista, I'm okay with it. But I'm not okay with it if we could end up with a building that can't be occupied.
Commissioner Blau, there would be a number of options available to a future business owner in that location, including commercial in-lu fees through the IV Master Plan in-lu parking fee program. That would be another option.
That answers my question. Then I'm satisfied.
Okay, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, I'm, you know, when we're talking about the, there's, on the left, not shown in this map here, because it's the project next door, those are the four spaces that are behind the print shop. Okay, so we're looking at the property, what I said, you know, coming in the middle of the parking lot, okay, over there on the right. Okay, you're going to have studio apartments. Each studio is going to have two parking spaces. I think that's wonderful, you know, it's fair. However, as I said, if you're going to have people coming in, and that these are tandem spaces, let's say, the residents take the two parking spaces, the outer spaces, you know, that would be easier to get in and out. Okay, then you have somebody that is racing into the restaurant, not on a bike, but in a car, and they might pull in, in front of the car. If I was an occupant of one of those studios, and I come downstairs, uh-oh, somebody getting some fast food is parking behind me. I just see that, you know, maybe if, you don't want to say the four of those would be dedicated to the studios, maybe take two of them, because it's just going to, I say, create some difficulties. Could that work?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Brooks, it is the full intention of the property owner to sign those spaces for residential use and deny commercial users of those parking spaces.
All four?
Yeah.
All four?
Yes.
Okay. Then I would be a happy tenant.
Right, okay. Commissioner Cooney.
But I think we need to incorporate that as a condition, that those, because the basis for allowing the residential conversion is that it has adequate parking. So I think we want to reserve those spaces and let the commercial spaces operate as they have.
Okay. Before I close the public hearing, I want to make sure that the appellant has had an opportunity to make her presentation. And I've seen some people come into our room, and I just want to make sure that Ms. Anter isn't here, that none of the people who've recently come in are the appellant. So no one rising, then I'm going to, before I do that, Ms. Black.
Madam Chair, just, if the commission wanted to formalize the reservation of those parking spaces for the two residential units, you could look at the project description condition.
Okay.
In the second paragraph, it says, "For tandem parking spaces in the rear of the lot would be reserved." And I would just insert "and signed" for the two residential units and remaining spaces, just to clarify.
Okay. Then I'm going to close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just want to make sure that we, everybody's had their opportunity for their day, before the commission. Okay, so with that suggestion, I'm going to bring it back to the commission for either further questions and/or deliberations. So any Commissioners have any additional questions? Commissioner Blau?
No.
No, I'm satisfied, thank you.
Okay. And no lights being lit. Commissioner Brooks, this is in your district, so I'll let you lead the way here.
Okay, I move that we follow the staff recommendation to deny the appeal. We make the required findings for the project specified in Attachment A, the ZA action letter dated March 3, and as revised by the June 2 memo, including the SEQA findings. We determined that the previously certified EIR, as part of the Isla Vista Master Plan, is adequate for environmental review as pursuant to SEQA, and that we grant de novo approval of these cases, subject to the conditions that we've made today, and as attached, in Attachment 2 and 3, the staff report.
And the additional language in the project description about signage spots. Okay, is there, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Villalobos, would you like to call the, any further question before we have Mr. Villalobos call a question? Okay.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
And Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. We're going to move on to project number three. I'm going to do a short, five-minute break for setup. Thank you. The record. For agenda item number three, and Mr. Villalobos, would you read that item into the record, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of owner Melissa Keeler to consider case number 06CUP41, application filed on July 13, 2006, excuse me, and to adopt negative declaration 08NGD12 pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Okay, ex parte and site visit disclosure, please. Commissioner Blau?
No.
No, okay. Commissioner Cooney?
I visited the site some time ago, when it was on a previous agenda.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Brooks?
I attempted to visit the site. I drove up Painted Cave Road. I found every number around that number. And I did call the manager, who said, you know, the gate was open for me, but now I understand I should have gone up another route. And very interesting drive along Painted Cave Road. I could write a book on my drive yesterday on Painted Cave Road, so someday I'll tell the story.
Commissioner Valencia?
We visited the area.
Okay. Like Commissioner Brooks, I didn't do my research, and I started off Painted Cave off of 154, and got very discouraged. And as the road got narrower and windier, I said, mm, no, I'm not doing this. I'm turning around, going home. So on a subsequent day, I figured out where this place was, and took off onto Camino Cielo, and then to Painted Cave, and it's certainly a much better access. But interesting to go down Painted Cave from the project down towards 154. And you'll hear my comments on that later. Anyway, so, Mr. Briggs, if you will, please.
Now up is the Laurel Springs Ranch Retreat Center. The project site is located in the San Inez Mountains at 2720 Painted Cave Road. The site includes several parcels totaling 156 acres in size, and is zoned mountainous 100. The site is surrounded by open lands to the north, east, and west, and the Painted Cave existing developed rural neighborhood is located directly southeast of the project site. The applicant seeks approval of a major conditional use permit to allow the operation of an adult retreat center within existing facilities at the Laurel Springs Ranch. No new structural development is proposed as part of the project. The facility has been used as a retreat on and off since 1905, and has been in its current configuration since the mid-'80s. A maximum of 35 retreats could be held per year, and each event would have a maximum attendance of 30 guests per retreat. The proposed retreats would provide a setting for multi-day yoga, meditation, and spiritual growth and awareness seminars, and would include overnight accommodations and meals. Retreats would be limited to three days each, with a maximum overnight stay of two nights. Events during the peak fire season would be limited with a maximum of five events held during the months of October through November, August through November. While the project site is located in a high-fire hazard area, it has historically been used by fire personnel as a staging area for fighting local fires, and could be used as a shelter-in-place destination by the Painted Cave community due to the site's open nature, readily defensible space, and large grass areas. And I wanted to point out some of the features of the property here on this site plan, while we have the chance. Like I said, the entire ranch is about 156 acres. All of the existing development is clustered on about 40 acres that you see right here. And the main entrance to the ranch is right through the main gate, right here. And you can see that they have a very large water storage pond that can be used for fire response purposes. They have several water storage tanks on site, one of which is pressurized. I think the total capacity is over 65,000 gallons of water. That water is also readily available for fire response. Several of the onsite buildings have fire sprinklers, not all of them do. I think four or five of the existing structures have fire sprinklers. They have fire extinguishers and fire hydrants located throughout the site, adjacent to every building. You can see they have a very large central green area here in the middle of the site. They also have other large grass areas that could be used for defensible space. And they have an ongoing, basically, continuous brush management program, where they have employees out there trimming brush, thinning brush. They're very aware of the potential fire danger in this area, and they do everything they can to keep that danger to a minimum. They also have a pool on site. Is there just one pool? They have one pool that could also be used for fire response as well. As requirement of the county fire department, the applicant has developed a preliminary fire management plan, which includes fire emergency-related information and procedures for an evacuation plan, a shelter-in-place plan, a brush control plan, fire system maintenance provisions, and guest orientation, and a comprehensive description of the onsite fire-related equipment. That plan was attached to the staff report for your review. And that plan has been reviewed on a conceptual basis by the fire department, but not yet approved in final form. And that's one of the things that'll be happening before they get their occupancy permit. A negative declaration was circulated for public review from April 11th to May 1st in 2008. Interestingly enough, we didn't receive any public comments on that negative declaration. And that also was attached to your staff report for your review. As condition, the project is consistent with the comprehensive plan, including the Galleta Community Plan and the Countywide Land Use Development Code. And staff's recommendation is to make the required findings for approval of the project as specified in Attachment A, including the SEQA findings, adopt the negative declaration 08NGD12 included as Attachment B, and adopt the mitigation monitoring program containing the conditions of approval, and finally approve the project case number 06CUP41, subject to the conditions including Attachment C.
Okay, thank you. Any questions by Commissioners? Okay, I have some. Mr. Briggs, and maybe the applicant will need to answer this. I did see that there were horses on site. And I'm just wondering, are they, they're incidents for use of the people who come to the retreats, or are they personal horses, or do you know?
Chair Brown, I would like the applicant to address that question.
Okay, when she does her presentation, we'll have you do that. Okay. Prelimarily, I wonder if our fire official would like to make any comments at this point in our briefing.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'm Glenn Fiddler with Sundar County Fire. I know. And preliminary, I've reviewed the fire protection plan, and it does need some tweaking. So the fire department would like the opportunity to be able to work with the applicant, to be able to fine-tune it. The majority of the fire protection plan is good. And the fire department is very comfortable with this project at this time.
Okay. Can you address the issue of the secondary access down Painted Cave from the project down to 154? And the reason I'm asking this is, I attempted to drive that. I'm not even sure I could walk it. Just because of the twisty, windy nature of this, there was a car coming up, I was coming down. And if there's a fire hazard, I don't understand how people could use this as a secondary access, or how even the fire department can consider it secondary.
Madam Chair, that is a very valid concern.
Mm-hmm.
The primary access point would be from 154 along East Camino Cielo to the Painted Cave Road.
Right.
And that would be their primary evacuation route. It would be, under careful consideration, would ever the Painted Cave route down to 154 be used. And that would be solely if there's a problem, say, at the 154, East Camino Cielo. You know, there is a third alternate also, that also goes to Gibraltar, and then back down Gibraltar. So there are actually multiple access points, sis.
Where is that ax? Can you describe, physically describe that, or maybe Mr. Briggs has a map of that? has a map of that?
Madam Chair, this is the project site here. It's a little covered up here. East Camino Cielo runs along the ridge up here, and, you know, the main access to the site here is from the west, but East Camino Cielo does continue on to the east, and it's quite a ways to Gibraltar, but it is drivable, passable.
And what is that road like? Is it like Painted Cave where it's one lane?
No, ma'am. I mean, yes, it is windy, but it's nowhere near Painted Cave.
Okay.
And so, you know, given a general fire scenario in an area at the incipient stages, once you are able to move from canyon to canyon, you're able to open up a lot of lead time and get going. So by the time, you know, if there was an issue that presented itself at 154 at East Camino Cielo, and that route was potentially blocked, by moving east, you would, you know, give yourself better lead time. So there are potential opportunities to be able to, you know,
To evacuate.
Evacuate safely.
Okay. I had a question on the perimeter where there was a condition, or the staff report talked about that the, between Painted Cave Road and the property, the fence, it would be kept clear. And I noticed that right adjacent to the fence on the inside of the property, there's kind of a line of vegetation. And I'm just wondering, was that, is that to be considered as part of the vegetation that has to be eliminated, or maintained, or mowed, or, these were kind of shrubby bushes, I guess. Can you just describe a little bit about the importance of, or what you look for in terms of perimeter vegetation or not?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, absolutely. The perimeter vegetation along roadways is imperative, and we have to be somewhat careful in what we try and designate what they are required to remove. What's on their property is their responsibility, but there's road easements that would, you know, Public Works would be a little bit more involved with, and that's potentially their responsibility, Public Works. I know that they have strong budget issues at this point in time, like every other county department. So potentially, Laurel Springs could be the good neighbor and assist in those areas, but it would only be along the frontage of their property.
Okay. Well, it does say that, and I didn't have any problems with it. I just had this thought that right adjacent to the fence, it looks like if there was anything on fire in that easement, then the shrubbery right next to the fence could catch fire, too. But if that's, you're okay with their maintaining that on the inside of their property adjacent to the fence?
Yes, we would prefer that. And the fire code gives us the ability to require 10-foot minimum, and quite often we will be looking for 20 feet, depending on slope and terrain.
Okay, so this is right off Painted Cave. So that's something that you go out individually to all property owners, telling them to do or requesting them to do?
The fire department does, yes.
So how do you do that annually, or just periodically?
Predominantly, it has been annually, but now that we have basically moved out of a fire season, and we have a year-round fire season, vegetation management is a year-round issue that applicants and property owners need to adhere to. And so if we determine that there's a potential for fire hazard through prolonged droughts, lack of rain, that type of thing, then we can request and require that more often than just a single time a year.
Okay. You mentioned about the fire emergency info and procedures plan, and I'm, and you indicated there needs to be some updating. And I just wonder, some of the information seems to me to be very out of date, considering what we went through with the Botanic Garden and sort of their, how the new monitoring is to be achieved. And I don't know if that's one of the issues, but hopefully that would be. Would you just make a brief comment on that? Because I know that when we saw the Botanic Garden, and by the time I made it to the board, it was sort of in process of fire safety procedures. And I don't know if there's been further refinement of those procedures and how they might apply to here, but would you just make a brief comment based upon what you've seen in their initial plan and what you see as changes that are needed?
Absolutely. There has been a change in the way that a red flag event is notified. And what has transpired is a streamlining of the process. What we have done is basically given the National Weather Service and a Southern California and Northern California Regional Coordination Center the ability to declare the red flag day. Prior to that, what was necessary was the same information would be developed, then would go to our county fire chief, and our county fire chief would have to get every other chief on the phone. They would all have to concur before they could declare red flag day. This is a much more efficient system. The Botanic Gardens differ significantly with this program as the amount of occupants that were going to be at the Botanic Gardens comparatively to this, the amount of access issues. We feel more comfortable with the Laurel Springs projects than we did with the Botanic Gardens project. And they were also required to close down on red flag days, which this project is not. So they were required to have monitoring in place as part of their CUP, and that was basically because of all the watchdogs that were going to be in the canyon themselves. We wanted them to be able to have the ability to prove that they were doing their due diligence. We do not feel that that would be a reasonable requirement on this project.
And that's because of the number of people that are projected to be on-site during the hot fire season, is that?
Correct. This is going to be limited to approximately 35 events per year, three days, two nights, to where Botanic Gardens is a year-round with much higher quantities. And they did not have any type of a occupancy threshold before, which they have imposed now.
Okay, great. Okay, that's helpful. Commissioner Cooney?
Just one fire question, and that is, the fires in the last couple of years appear to have come fairly close to this property on the downhill side. And I wonder if your experience allowed you to use any portion of the facilities there either for staging or for water use or shelter in place? Was anything activated as a result of any of the prior fires?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Cooney, to the best of my knowledge, none of their water supplies were used. I believe there was some staging for fire personnel in the large grassy area in the middle, and evacuation was such that there was ample notification. And that's what we really emphasize, and that's one of the things that I would like to change with the fire protection plan, is evacuation first. That's what we want. We want people out. We do not want shelter in place. We do not advocate that. That is an absolute last-ditch effort.
Okay. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you. I'm looking at the comment that was made that the number of retreats are limited to a maximum of five from August 1st to November 30th. I think that was considered probably the high fire season. Is the fire department comfortable? Didn't we redefine the fire season earlier today? I think it was related to us. So perhaps, is that still an accurate timeframe to say, you know, we can only, you know, have limited events between August 1st and November 30th, maybe staff?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Brooks? Again, we have gotten out of fire season. We have year-round fire season, and we are very aware of that. We have different levels of preparedness that the fire department will adhere to during weather events. So in discussions with the deputy fire chief and two of the division chiefs, we were really not uncomfortable with that amount of events. If it was to change slightly, that would be okay. We understand that the warmer weather, the summer months are very appealing to clients and guests and to the retreats. So in the manner that they are proposing their CUP, we do not have any issues with at this time.
This, just to follow on with Commissioner Brooks's question, this is a period of August, September, October, four months. If this time period, it looks like it's about one and a quarter per month, I would guess, if you were to divide it by the number of months. Would it be, would you be more comfortable if the period was from the May 1st through the November 30th, and placing a limit on the number of events during that time?
The direction I was given from my overhead, we are really not too concerned with limiting the number of events for a specific period of time. You could, I feel you could increase the number for the period of time that's proposed at this time.
So what I hear you say is that the August through November period for these, limiting the number of events, is adequate and is?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. If I have no other questions from Commissioners, I will turn it over to the applicant for their presentation.
Good afternoon. I'm Melissa Keeler.
Hi, welcome.
Hello. I'm very glad to be here. I really don't have a presentation.
Okay, great.
This wonderful report that Erin and Ann put together speaks, I think, for itself. But I've brought John Baer, who's the ranch manager, with me to answer any technical questions that you might have.
Okay. Well, I would just like to ask one question of either you or Mr. Baer, and that's concerning the animals. Are they there for the pleasure of the guests? Are they personal animals, or?
We have three horses.
Okay.
Two of them belong to one of the staff members, and one is a boarding horse. The retreatants do not ride the horses. The other group of animals we have are goats, and John can tell you more about that. They spend their days eating the chameys all around the outer hinterlands of the ranch to create natural fire breaks. They've been very helpful that way.
Okay. This is, I guess, a question I'm not sure for either the applicant or Mr. Fidler. In the case of animals that are boarded, is there some, in terms of a fire emergency, do they need to be mentioned in the fire plan about removing, or what, how is that handled? Can you just talk to me about some of these horses? You know, you hear when you see these fires, you know, where they can take all the animals, the horses. But I'm just wondering about horses that are, is there a different requirement for personal horses and horses that are boarded? Is there some sort of obligation of the property owner to do something differently?
Excuse me. Madam Chair, Commissioners, not that I'm aware of. Animals are going to be last resort, you know, one of the last efforts we get after. One of the things that we are somewhat concerned with is if there's a large number of large animals.
Right.
And there is, say, an equine evacuation group trying to get to the property with large vehicles. That can obscure and obstruct roadways.
Right.
So that type of thing would, should be somewhat considered in their fire protection plan, just so it is addressed, and they have an actual portion of their plan to
Address that.
To address that. So there's not confusion, and there isn't multiple entities coming up trying to take care of their animals.
So that will need to be added, or at least some thought given to?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Baer, like to, does he have anything he'd like to add? No? Okay. Well, with that, then I will open up the public comment portion. If we have no public comments, okay, then we don't, then I'll close the public comment period and turn it back to the commission for any further questions. Commissioner Blau, any questions?
No.
None? Okay. How about from my fellow Commissioners? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you, Chair Brown. I'm really disappointed I didn't get to see the property yesterday, but I am going to ask, when I got to the area on Painted Cave Road where it was 2720, where it should have been, is, did you have a gate there that had stumps that had been cut? I don't understand where this secondary access is, and because...
Mr. Briggs, if you, would you put that map up again so that you can explain? Because the numbering isn't sequential along Painted Cave. That's part of the problem.
I can't explain, excuse me, I can't explain why that turned out that way.
Do, please.
No, I cannot. It was that, we were 2720 at Painted Cave Road when I moved there.
Right.
And it was later I discovered that if you follow Painted Cave Road down, you hit another group of
Numbers.
Numbers that are very similar. And I don't know why it was organized that way.
Mr. Briggs, would you just put that on the map, if you have a close-in map where you can show the connection? This is, why don't you just kind of go over, do you have one that you can just back out that shows Camino Cielo down to Painted Cave? That's what you've got? Okay. Okay. Why don't you do the next one? So for Commissioner Brooks's understanding that this is, the road at the top goes to Camino Cielo, East Camino Cielo, okay? That's primary. At the bottom, if you were to continue on that road, that's Painted Cave, and that would, that will take you, thank you, down to the area where you were and where you didn't go any further, where you found these confusing numbers. That's the secondary access. Does that help?
So at no point, if I went up 27, I was at the 2730s, I continued up the hill.
You'd come to this project at some point in time.
Okay. Well, it just seems to me, I mean, if you're using GPS or anything else, that I don't know how you could get your address changed, because it seems it's not where you would think it is. I mean, I don't know who's in charge of that, but...
We always tell everyone to come up by east, by way of East Camino Cielo, because it takes the confusion away. But of course, not everyone hears what we say.
Well, and on your website, it does say to go Camino Cielo. It is very clear there of how to get there. So I imagine, and when you send documentation, I'd hope, when you send documentation to those coming, that you do tell them to go that way.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, I'm sure you do. Okay. All right. Then back to the commission. Okay, Commissioner Valencia?
Madam Chair, I don't have any questions.
Oh, you don't?
I don't have any problem with the project.
Okay. I would just like, based upon some of the fire-related questions, I am wondering, and maybe this is a question for Ms. Black, if, how we could see an updated fire plan to address some of the concerns that we've discussed today, just to ensure that they're incorporated. I really would like to, I don't have any problems with the project. I think there's just some tweaking that needs to be done and updating to the fire plan. But sort of like with the Botanic Garden, I think we had some assurances about certain things that were happening, and I don't, this is probably the only time we're going to see this, and I'm not sure how to do that.
Madam Chair, if there are certain aspects of the fire plan you want to see revised or augmented, then I think you could specify that in project condition today. If you actually want to see the fire plan, then you would need to continue this until they had a revised fire plan. So we did not even require that for the Botanic Garden.
No, I know. It was separate, and they did sort of revise it as we maybe went along, or I'm not sure what they did.
Well, I think you conditioned the final fire plan, and as did the Board of Supervisors, to include certain aspects, and then you left it to staff, mainly the fire department staff, to ensure that those measures were included.
Okay, great. Commissioner Cooney?
I really was going to comment along the lines Ms. Black just did. I think we rely on the fire department to tell us what the fire plan should include. And as I understand the condition, it is to submit a fire plan satisfactory to the fire department. So I'm not capable of second-guessing their concern. I think it's primary. So I think it's fine to approve the project subject to the satisfaction of the fire department and then leave it to them to include whatever details are necessary.
Mr. Briggs?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, in my review of the project and the fire department condition letter, I didn't realize that they had not granted final approval to the fire protection plan. And in speaking with Mr. Fidler earlier today, we both would like to request a recommended condition requiring a final fire protection plan be reviewed and approved by the fire department prior to occupancy.
Okay. All right, then we will, if I, I'm sure I have the support of my Commissioners, I want that that would be done. And what I would just like to make sure is that, and you've addressed all these issues, Mr. Fidler, is that it's about the fire monitoring, you know, here it says it's by radio scanner. No, it's, I think it's a different way you do it. I don't know if they can do it by that way, but you may have a preferred way that it's done.
Yeah, yeah. National Weather Service posted on the website. So, yeah, they will have the ability to monitor that.
Okay. And then I would just like to make sure the animal issues are addressed.
Yes, ma'am.
The perimeter veg clearing? The perimeter veg clearing and secondary access issues. It's, anyway, so you have part of it, but I, I have very great concerns about going south on Painted Cave. I just, anyway, okay. Then.
I have, Chair Brown, one question?
Oh, sorry, please.
Thank you. In the conditions, on page B7, there's reference in number seven on, at least two weeks prior to commencement of construction. There is no new construction involved. That's what I thought, that's just as it is. And I think further down, there's the stop-work order, so those items really don't apply to this, because there is no new construction in the project?
What page is that on?
Page, B7. Project-specific conditions. 7B.
So, we leave that in, and it's okay, because it's not involved in this?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Brooks, we could take it out, it would be cleaner, but it really, because there is no construction, that particular subsection doesn't technically apply to the project.
Right, okay.
Standard language.
I guess I just have one last question for Mr. Brooks, as I'm trying to thumb through this document. And it, this is in the staff report, where it talks about, no, I can't even find it. Oh, evacuation procedures, and I guess this is really for, to inclusion in the fire safety plan. It talks about evacuation plan. Ranch management will make a practical effort to cancel any seminars scheduled during the alert period. Now, was that incorporated into a condition? I'm sorry, I can't place my fingers on it at the moment, but.
Chair Brown, the project description is a condition of approval.
Okay, so that is in the project description?
That's correct.
So, how do you enforce that? I mean, how would you, how would the fire department even enforce something like that? Mr. Fiddler?
Madam Chair Commissioners, the, a recent project that went through before the Board of Supervisors was required to monitor the National Weather Service.
Right.
Create a log of every day.
Right.
And that way, it was able to be reviewed against their conditional use permit. That is really, the fire department's really not looking toward them closing down or requiring the closure.
Okay.
Of Laurel Springs on red flag alert days. And so, we would be hesitant to pursue that type of a.
Okay. So, it's okay as it stands in the project description? Because that's not something that you're going to be wanting to enforce or try to?
Correct.
Okay.
We would encourage.
You would encourage that, but.
Madam Chair, there is actually a condition for the, for Laurel Springs to provide retreat logs, and that's condition six.
On page?
So, presumably, the date of events, as well as the number of attendees at events, will be included in that retreat log.
And, and so, but to, what is, so, what is the effect of this retreat log?
Well, Madam Chair, I think it's, I think it's intended to monitor the number, compliance with the number of events per year and attendees at events.
Okay, all right. Okay, I have, I have good assurances from Mr. Fiddler concerning the other issue, and I don't have any problem. That's fine, that's good with me. Ms. Keeler, did you want to?
I just wanted to say that it is very much our personal concern to not have people up there when we're very clear that we're in a red flag.
Oh, well, I understand.
Time.
Yeah.
And we would not hesitate to cancel.
Thank you. I, I think there's just, on my part, heightened sensitivity since we've gone through the Botanic Garden issue, which was very much predicated on a lot of these, a lot of the conditions were predicated on, change in conditions on some of the fire safety issues, and having been up in the area, it kind of raises my alert as well. So, with that, Mr. Briggs, if you'd put on the revised, I guess I got it in the, okay, staff recommendation, and since this is in my district, and I'm pleased that there's such a nice facility in the second district for people to go to, and, and what I'd like to do is, then I'd like to move staff's recommendation to make the required findings for approval of the project specified in attachment A of the staff report, including the sequoia findings, adopt the negative declaration, O8 NGD string zero twelve, included as attachment V, and adopt the mitigation monitoring program contained in the conditions of approval, and approve the project case number O6 CUP string zero forty-one, subject to the conditions included as attachment C. And, Mr. Briggs, would you like to provide the additional language?
Yes.
Thank you.
A final fire protection plan shall be reviewed and approved by Santa Barbara County Fire Department and PND prior to the issuance of zoning clearance to effectuate the conditional use permit.
Okay.
And animal evacuation, perimeter clearing, and secondary access shall specifically be addressed.
Okay, and fire monitoring? Because I think those were the issues that was kind of out of sync with what, okay, great. Okay. If my fellow commissioners agree with that, I would look for a second.
I'll second.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any further discussion? No further discussion? Commissioner Blau, you've been kind of quiet up there today. You're ready for?
I'm ready to hoop.
Okay, great, all right. Okay, okay. Okay, Mr. Phil Olivas, would you call the question, please?
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
And Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, thank you very much, and there you have your project, and I appreciate Mr. Fiddler coming today. Okay, we'll take a five-minute break before we set up for.
While you're brother breaking, can I just make an inquiry here?
The hearing is on the request of Ginger Anderson, agent for the owner, Jan Handman, to consider case number 09CUP fourteen and 09CDP twenty, applications filed on March 31, 2009, and to adopt the mitigated negative declaration, 10NGD five pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Great, thank you. Ex parte and site visit. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you, Chair Brown. I visited the site yesterday.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cooney?
I also visited the site a couple of days ago.
Commissioner Blau? No site, none? Okay, Commissioner?
And I also visited the site.
Okay, thank you. And I have visited the site as well, but no ex parte. Ms. Mashore, if you would, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Today I will be presenting the Halani Farms Horse Boarding Project. The project is located at 331 Lambert Road, north of the intersection of Lambert Road and Villarreal, on property zone Ag 120. This slide shows a closer view of the site and existing facilities. Existing development on-site includes a barn, a farm employee dwelling, a carport, paddocks, a jump chute, hay storage building, and pastures and corrals totaling approximately 3.6 acres, including corrals adjacent to a tributary to Toro Creek, which would be abandoned as a part of the project. The proposed project is a major conditional use permit to allow an increase in the number of horses on-site from 10 to 23, and to allow commercial use of the site. Horses would be boarded for rehabilitation stays lasting one to six months at a time. Owners would visit the site only to drop off and pick up the horses, would not visit the site regularly, and would not visit the site for riding purposes. Existing facilities would be maintained and would be adequate to serve the increased number of horses. There'd be no special events and no additional night lighting. The operation would be served by one part-time and four full-time employees. Hours of operation would be 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. And finally, an animal waste management plan would be implemented. A negative declaration was prepared for the project. The negative declaration found three impact areas where the project would have less-than-significant impacts with mitigation. Those include water quality, due to the potential for site runoff, containing increased quantities of sediment nutrients and bacteria associated with increased number of horses, land use due to potential inconsistency with Toro Canyon Plan Policy WWTC four, which requires that animal facilities be designed and maintained to prevent discharge in nutrients and contaminants into surface and groundwater. And finally, cultural resources, due to the location of the site near a tributary to Toro Creek and proximity to an archaeological site. Mitigation measures used to ensure less-than-significant impacts include preparation and implementation of an animal waste management plan, installation of a water treatment bioswale, abandonment of corrals adjacent to the Toro Creek Tributary, and a mitigation measure requiring that, in the event that a cultural resource is uncovered during, during installation of the bioswale, work would be stopped in order to allow for study of that resource. Waste management plan would include daily waste and animal bedding collection from corrals, enclosed animal waste material storage and, storage bins, and trash pickup service three times a week. Best management practices, including, would include straw waddle, silt fencing, gravel bags, and geotextile fabrics during rain events. Pest control measures, dust control measures, and equipment maintenance procedures are also included in the waste management plan. In order to further protect against water quality impacts, a bioswale would be installed in the southern portion of the site, and corrals would be abandoned along the eastern portion of the site. Corrals on the eastern portion of the site would be abandoned due to their proximity to the tributary to Toro Creek, which you can see on the slide in blue, running, running through the middle of that corral area. And the bioswale would be installed in an area where site drainage runs adjacent to paddocks, and this would be placed there in order to filter runoff from that paddock area. I have some site photos, if you'd like to see that later on. The meandering design and bioswale vegetation would slow the velocity of runoff, and would allow for greater filtration of sediment and nutrients. And this slide shows just a more detailed schematic of the proposed bioswale. The project is located in the Ag 120 zone. The purpose and intent of the Ag 120 zone is to protect lands appropriate for long-term agricultural use within or adjacent to urbanized areas, and to preserve prime agricultural soils. The proposed project would be consistent with the purpose and intent, because the site would continue to be used for agricultural purposes, including maintenance of an on-site orchard, and animal keeping in the form of horse boarding and rehabilitation, and finally, prime soils on-site would be preserved. There's no structures or new hardscape proposed. Toro Canyon Plan Policy WWTC dash four requires that animal facilities be designed, be sighted, designed, managed, and maintained to prevent discharge of sediment nutrients and contaminants in the surface and groundwater. And the project would be consistent with this requirement, because of the bioswale would filter runoff from nearby paddocks. The waste management plan would ensure proper disposal of animal waste materials, procedures for dust control, and implementation of best management practice. Also, corrals adjacent to Toro Creek would be abandoned in order to prevent nutrient discharge in that area. In summary, the project is consistent with the policies of the comprehensive plan, including the coastal land use plan and Toro Canyon Plan, is compliant with Article II Coastal Zoning Ordinance, and all impacts would be mitigated to less-than-significant levels. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that your commission make the required, required findings for the project, including sequoia findings, adopt the negative declaration, case number 10NGD five, and adopt the mitigation monitoring program, and approve the project subject to conditions. Finally, before I conclude my presentation, I would like to draw your attention to supplemental memo that I provided to you today. Based on consultation with county council, there was some additional language that needed to be added to the findings, and it would be staff's recommendation that you adopt these findings as amended, rather than the findings included in the staff report. And that will include my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Presenta, questions?
No, sure.
Yes, Ms., Commissioner Blau?
Three things here. I think we need to correct number seventeen on B6, where we have hours of construction. It's the same thing on attachment A, number two. We want to adopt the language where we refer to whatever the current county's construction timing is. And then I need an explanation of the description where we talked about hours of operation between seven and four. It doesn't make sense to me if a boarding horse is 24 hours a day, so I'm not sure what they mean by hours of operation for the, for things other than construction.
You mean in the project?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Blau, I believe that the hours of operation of seven to four is the hours that the staff would generally be on-site, and people would be dropping off and picking up horses, is that correct?
They're nodding their head. The applicant is nodding their head, Commissioner.
Okay, so I think we just need to, just to correct the construction hours, so that we're consistent with the changes we keep making on that, that one issue.
No other Commissioner questions? Then I turn to the applicant for any presentation they may wish to make.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Thanks. I'm Ginger Anderson with Penfield &amp; Smith, agent for the applicant, and I just wanted to say thank you very much to Nicole Mashore and Alice for working so well with us on, on our conditions, and wanted to clarify just a couple of things, where the staff report says that increase the number of horses from 10 to 23. They use 10 as the current baseline, as that's the number of horses that are currently on-site. However, for private use, there have been more than that in the past, so it's, has a history of use greater than 10, and so, the purpose of this is for the, you know, if we're going to do commercial, we needed a baseline of 10 to work off of. And I wanted to go through, basically, that the waste management plan that's, that's been prepared to address water quality issues was based on the, the county guidelines for animal waste management plan, and as we were going through to prepare that, all of those measures are already being taken by the, the owner, and that the site is very well-maintained and landscaped, and it's always been the intent of the owner to, to take very good care of the site and ensure that there are no environmental impacts to, to what it is they're doing out there. As for the hours of operation, yes, that seven to four was meant to, to limit the, when employees are generally on-site, when horses will be delivered for their extended stay vacations, and also to, just to clarify, there is an onsite full-time employee that lives in the farm employee dwelling, so that person is there 24 hours outside of the, the seven to four that we stated.
Okay. Great. I just have a question in your, so the project description of the number of animals on 23 is not going to change?
No, it wouldn't be more than that. That's, that's by code.
And it says in the project description, primarily horses. So, there might, you might have donkeys or some other sort of?
Yeah, onsite, there's a mini-horse. I think its name is Itty Bitty, and I believe Merrill saw it yesterday, and so we wanted to make sure that it, it's definitely equine, but we don't want to limit that there is a mini-horse as well, and, you know, that's.
So, is that mini-horse included in the 23?
It is, yes.
Yeah, it is, okay. So, okay, all right. Mini-horse, is that what they're called, mini-horses?
It's a donkey.
Oh, it is a donkey?
It is a donkey, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, he doesn't fall under the, is a donkey an equine? Anyway, it is, all right. Okay.
Not a horse person, sorry.
Okay, all right. Okay. Does that conclude your presentation?
Yeah, that's all, and we're here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you.
Any, any public comment?
No, no public comment. Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this, and bring it back to the commission for any further questions, before we go do deliberations. commission for any further questions before we do deliberations. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes. In our staff report, they had included the letter from the channel keepers. And I am sure it's all delineated in the animal waste management plan, but perhaps the applicant could give me some details. Because one of the questions they had about the manure bins being raised or on a concrete pad, has that been done? And I know that there were some changes made, you know, to address these issues, but perhaps our staff could help me on that. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Brooks, yes, I went through that letter, and I can address any of the channel keeper's... Should I address all of the comments at channel keeper?
I would appreciate it if you would, because I have questions myself.
Okay. Their first question had to do with the bathing of the horses. And horses are currently bathed in an area, I believe inside the barn, where it drains directly to an existing onsite septic system. And we did review the project with Environmental Health Services. They also reviewed the negative declaration, and they had no conditions on the project. So, channel keeper's concern was that, I think, the soapy water would maybe just run off the site, but it's being directed to a septic system indoors. They had a question about the 2005 drainage plan, and that drainage plan was approved by the county and is already installed, and that occurred in 2005. So that basically represents the baseline of what's out there right now. They do have a number of drainage features in place, and the new features and conditions that we applied as a part of this project were designed just to improve filtration of water coming off the site. The bins are covered. They're located on a permeable asphalt area, and they're actually raised marbore trash bins. So they're not sitting on the ground, and they're 100% covered. Finally, channel keeper had a question about monitoring. A number of, you'll see in the negative declaration, some strikeout and underlying language on conditions in the water quality section. And a lot of that, a lot of those changes were intended to provide more clarification to the county, to the applicant, and to channel keeper as far as how we would be monitoring the conditions. The waste management plan and bioswale and the general condition of the site would be monitored by our permit compliance staff at least two times a year, including after the first large rain event of the season, and would also be monitored by the applicant through photo documentation three times a year that would be available for our permit compliance staff. This would go on for three years, for a period of three years, and assuming that everything, you know, was in compliance with the conditions, they would be given back a bond that they had put in place to ensure that these procedures were followed. If it turned out that they had failed in any of these respects, that our permit compliance went out there and saw through visual monitoring deterioration in water quality, then they'd be required to implement additional water quality treatment measures and also a water sampling program as well. So what we did is we built in monitoring into those conditions, but we didn't require water quality monitoring until they had failed in one of the initial respects in terms of bioswale function or implementation of the animal waste management plan. So that should address channel keeper's questions.
I have a question on water. If you did do water quality monitoring, that creek is lined, and you could, you would only be able to do the monitoring in the portion that is the runoff from their property? Because if you do it at the end of their property, you're getting everybody else's, right? So...
Madam Chair, that is correct. That is why, even though channel keeper suggested monitoring, we felt that visual monitoring and applying these mitigation measures at the front end would be better than trying to measure something that may or may not... We did talk with Project Clean Water staff. It may or may not actually be coming off their property.
Right.
So it's really a hard thing to measure.
Okay. Good. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Mashur, the class-two prime soils are okay in the Ag element, says it's okay to use horses there on these prime-two soils. Just want to clarify that.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Valencia, yes, we also checked with the county ag planner, and the class-two prime soils actually aren't the, you know, the top tier of soils for agriculture. So they...
That's okay.
Yeah, they were totally fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Cooney.
I just have a concern. I do think I can go along with the monitoring as conditional upon the failure to meet the other requirements as indicated. But what we're doing is relying heavily on these staff compliance visits. Says at least two a year, so that means it could be more. And if it's a heavy rain year, it might well be more. But then it terminates at the end of three years, but the operation keeps going. So after the first three years, there's really no check by the county as to whether the applicant's waste management plan is still in compliance. Is that right?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Cooney, that is correct. It would terminate after three years, provided it had been shown that the procedures that they had been implemented successfully. Otherwise, it would be extended for additional period of time. And after that successful three-year period, it would be complaint-driven. But they would also, if we received a complaint, they're still subject to being in compliance with those requirements, and we could still have our permit compliance go out there and enforce that as a part of the project.
Well, I just think, I'll just throw this out, that I would be more comfortable... I'm fine with a reduction in the intensity of the monitoring, and if we went to once a year at a random time, just to make sure for an additional two years, I'd be more comfortable that after that, we could rely on complaints. But, you know, the issues with regard to contamination of the creek go all the way down to the ocean, and there are a lot of properties that would be affected. So I am concerned about it. I have no doubt this applicant would adhere closely to these requirements, but we don't know that this would be the owner of the property down the road. So I'd like to see just a little longer tether on our monitoring of the project water quality.
A question regarding just complaint-driven. Is it usually just channel keeper that drives these complaints? How would a neighbor ever know whether or not, unless they did water quality testing, whether or not there's impaired runoff? So it's just basically some nonprofit, Heal the Bay, something like that that might... Or Heal the Ocean, excuse me.
Madam Chair, I think complaints could come from neighbors if they noticed that the animal waste management plan was not being implemented as it should be. We've certainly received complaints like that before from neighbors. They wouldn't obviously be testing the quality of the water and be able to confirm it that way. And then we have received and followed up on complaints from channel keeper.
Okay. Heal the Ocean. Did I see another...
Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Blau.
Yeah, I don't think it's that difficult to test the water to figure out whether it's their runoff or somebody else's. I mean, you test the water before it enters their site. You test the water at the end of their site, and the difference is their contribution to the contamination. And it would seem to me the county always has the ability to go ahead and take those two tests to make a determination if there's a problem. I think it's a rather easy test to do. Am I missing something here? Maybe your staff can help me.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Blau, I'm not sure if you can see it. I put up an aerial photo of the site, and this site, the drainage runs... Let me get a different sight. The drainage that runs through the property runs, the tributary runs along the side of the property. And the entire property is kind of at a low point for the area. So all of the surrounding properties run onto this property and then over it. And then also, there's... And comes through their property. So I suppose we could test at both ends. It is something that I talked in great detail with Project Clean Water about. The other issues that arise are having a bank of data showing the water quality for a period of time, because a lot of times you'll find spikes on a particular day. Maybe there's a rain event. Maybe someone on another property had a spill of some sort of material. And as you get into it and try and get down, you know, what are we measuring? And what are the quantities that are above a threshold or below a threshold? It gets pretty difficult to create a very reasonable testing way to do water quality monitoring that really ties something that is happening on this property to a change in the water quality, when over time, there's natural spikes in the water quality. So we'd have to have some kind of a large bank of information before we even started measuring it in order to create a threshold. I don't know if this is making sense, but we did explore it in great detail, and our staff at Project Clean Water seemed to think that it would be better to apply the mitigation measures at the front end. Because even if we did get the data showing that they are causing a decrease in water quality, the only thing that we'd go back and do is apply more conditions to them, such as animal waste management plan, or a bioswale, or something like that. So that is why we went with trying to apply the measures at the front end, rather than doing a difficult monitoring process and applying mitigations after that failed.
This may be a question for Ms. Van Mullen, but am I correct in assuming that if for some reason it was determined that the water quality had degraded, and it was at the fault of the applicant, could we revoke their permit? Because ultimately, that's the ultimate penalty if you fail to comply. And is it written such a way we could do that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Blau, since this is a conditional use permit, there is a revocation procedure for a CUP if the applicant is not in compliance with the conditions. But it involves a whole procedure, including a hearing.
I understand that, but that is our ultimate remedy if they fail to comply. Am I correct?
That is, that is correct.
Okay. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
You know, I guess my question, excuse me, Commissioner Cooney, let me just jump in here while this thoughts in my mind, is that as Ms. Mashur indicated, that because if they're a low point, they get runoff from adjacent properties, you're going to even get runoff from the roadways into Toro Creek. So trying to attribute poor water quality or degraded water quality standards to them is going to be difficult, particularly, I don't know how you would do that, because they get it from all sources, including their property. So I would find that how you could, just thinking fast forward about revoking a permit if the water quality degraded, it might be attributed to somebody else, to another property. Yeah.
Madam Chair, I think we would just have to have substantial evidence showing that it came from this property.
Right.
And you're right, given the situation on this property, I don't think water testing alone is going to necessarily reach that conclusion.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney.
This is more a matter of curiosity. Ms. Mashur, the applicant may need to offer a specific plan, if there is one. I think it is a good idea to abandon the corrals adjacent to the water course. We leave some considerable leeway to the applicant as to what is done with those corrals, and I just wondered if they had any specific plan. It is a visual benefit to see the corrals from the road. I don't know if they're going to be torn down, what kind of vegetation is planned, that kind of thing. So maybe we could just get an indication. I don't think we need to go further than our condition does.
Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Cooney, the owner has indicated to me that they want some flexibility with what they do, that their intent is to abandon the corrals in place and not create any further disturbance by removing them because of the nature of where they are located. And secondly, the owner had indicated, and originally, the condition staff had written indicated that the corrals would be abandoned in place, period. And we added the allowed to be naturally revegetate or replanted based on the owner's wish to have some flexibility on whether or not they wanted to plant a vegetable garden or some native species, or to make it look, you know, not manicured, but to, you know, stabilize the soil in that area and to plant, to use that area for landscape. So we worked with staff on that, and that is, the indication to me was potentially a vegetable garden and to replant it in some manner, but to leave that flexible so that we don't have to go through the added expense of a landscape architect creating a manicured or, you know, exactly what it needs to look like and exactly what needs to be planted there. So we're satisfied with the condition as it reads now.
Well, thank you.
Just, Madam Chair and Commissioner Cooney, just for clarification, I think the condition says native, non-invasive vegetation.
Right. Or it just says to let it naturally revegetate, but...
I'm not sure a vegetable garden is really consistent with that.
No, and of course, my concern is naturally revegetate. That means weeds, because...
I have some slides that I sent to, I'm sorry if I'm loud, to Nicole earlier today, just that show, if we want to go to the first showing the corrals the way they are, and then additional site photos. Yeah. And then I think I sent you some more of just general, what it looks like. That's the condition of the corrals right now. And if we keep going, one more. Just kind of cycle through the last few. The site is very well-maintained, and the purpose of showing these pictures was to show what the, I guess, the taste or the general maintenance and landscape preferences of the owner are. So I think if we leave the condition, I don't think the owner would be interested in seeing that area remain weeds.
Lot of good nitrogen in that soil.
Ms. Anderson, as you know, it's, we have to determine the use of the property, not owner by owner, but property by property. So I agree, the site is wonderfully maintained now. It's beautiful, and I certainly hope that any subsequent owners would acquire it with the idea of keeping that same lovely look. But to be sure, we have to build in these conditions. So that's why I asked about the corrals. It's good there are no animals regularly there, but you don't want the weeds to grow up and become an unsightly issue either.
Right. And I think the owner would be amenable, if you wanted to just delete the option of allowed to naturally revegetate and just simply leave it at, would be replanted. That would also, I think, be a good solution.
Well, you know, it's interesting, the condition just says along the eastern portion of the site. It doesn't say how much along the eastern portion of the site. So the condition is a little broad. If the commission has an interest, or if Commissioner Cooney have an interest in seeing that natives be planted, you know, you could do it immediately along the creek and then have the other portion left up to how, what the owner would like to do with a vegetable garden. So, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes. From my observation, when we discussed this when we went by, there is a slope, you know, where it goes right down from this area, although it looks very level there, and it does go into that creek that's right there. Could they do an organic vegetable garden? It seems that, you know, the owner, I don't think we're looking at, you know, landscaping, but maybe doing something functional, and would that... I don't know. I think there'd have to be some, a little bit of grading or something there to keep... or something there to keep, not necessarily the soils, but there couldn't be any chemical use there because it would go right down into that creek.
Ms. Black. Madam Chair, Condition Four addresses the abandoning of these corrals. And it notes that this is a mapped ESH area. And that's why we've limited revegetation to plants with non-invasive native species, excuse me.
Okay. That makes a difference then.
So, you're saying naturally revegetate means that they could just let it go to seed, basically, as to whatever's there?
Well, what I was actually speaking to, Madam Chair, and Commissioner Cooney, was the second part of that, which is, or be replanted with non-invasive native species.
So, can we just, as the applicant suggests, delete the words to naturally revegetate, or?
Yes. We could definitely do that.
All right.
Okay.
Was there any comment about that? That's okay. All right.
Okay. I, where I think, we didn't have any public comment, and we closed that portion of the hearing. So, any further questions? And Commissioner Cooney, this is in your district. Would you like to, yeah, would you like to proceed?
Madam Chair, I'm prepared to move forward for approval with the project. And I'll just ask if any of my fellow commissioners would like to offer any input before I do.
No. I appreciate the change in Condition Four. I, you know, I did ask Ms. McCurdy about the issue of the water quality. And it's my thinking that probably it needs to be planted. And if this is an ESH, then obviously, is the natives in that hopefully would improve the water quality. Because if you planted any ornamentals, then you're going to have fertilizers, pesticides, and other things that also affect water quality, particularly nitrogen levels increase, go down into creeks. And most of our creeks unfortunately have more nitrogen than what they need. But I would support the change to the Condition Number Four and the project generally. Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And to Commissioner Cooney, I've visited a lot of ranch sites in the San Ines area, and the Santa Maria area, and Alonpoke. And I've got to tell you that this is really a beautiful one in comparison to some of them that have a little bit more difficulty. This is beautiful. So, with that, I support the project.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes. And I would like to echo Commissioner Valencia's comments. It is beautifully, you know, kept site. And I was very impressed with all aspects, very kind of low-key, well-manicured. I especially like to compliment the applicant with the cooperation, with the help of staff, you know, with some of the concerns of Channel Keeper. Just seems to me that, you know, this person wants to, you know, do the right thing and have a successful business, but certainly, you know, keeping the property, you know, just kept very nicely. Thank you.
Commissioner Blau.
Yeah, I'm ready to support it. I still have a little concern, to tell you the truth, about the hours of operation in the description. I hate to see things like that in there. I mean, are you telling me that no one's ever going to deliver a horse at 4:30 or 5:00, or we're not going to have some employee washing a late horse at 5:00 or 6:00? I'm not sure I understand the need for the hours of operation. Not a big deal, but it's one of those unintended consequences that you get into when it's not necessary. And I assume you're making the changes to the construction hours, to our new standard hour thing. That's my only concern. I just don't see, I just don't see the need for the hours of operation to be four to seven. By their own admission, they have one full-time employee there that's on-site 24 hours a day. Is he in violation of the project approval if he works past 4:00? A little concerned.
Would the applicant like to make a further comment? No? Okay. You want the hours left at that? Okay. All right. Commissioner Cooney.
The hours of operation are simply to give the boarders, the horses' owners, and hours of which we will do procedures for the horses, whether that's handwalk, whether that's put them on the European walker, whether that's exercise them, whether that's using any of our radiation machines, or any of the sort. So, it's purely to give the owners, we do procedures or take care of your horses between the hours of seven and four.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, you might want to consider just inserting the word "normal," "normal hours of operation." I don't know if that would make Commissioner Blau feel more comfortable.
Okay.
We didn't insist upon this. This is, was simply something offered by the applicant.
Yeah, that would make me very comfortable. That way, we're not having unintended consequences or problems later on. It'd be great.
Okay.
All right. Then I am prepared to move forward, and we'd better do it before the coastal development permit would require a change in use. The motion would be to make the required findings for the project specified in the revised attachment A, as outlined in the memorandum dated June 2, 2010, to adopt the negative declaration included as attachment C to our staff report, and adopt the mitigation monitoring program contained in the conditions of approval. And then approve the project subject to the conditions included in attachment B and as modified in the hearing today.
Second.
Madam Chair, would it be okay if I went through those conditions, just so it's real clear?
Yes.
At least what I think they are. So, the first change would be to insert the word "normal" prior, right before "hours of operation" in the project description condition, in both the conditional use permit and the CDP that's attached, as the conditions of approval. Second would be in the third, well, third bolded paragraph of the project description to also delete "allowed to naturally revegetate or be," so that the condition would simply read, would be replanted with the non-invasive native plant species.
Okay.
That same change would be made to Condition Four, and would also be made in the project description of the CDP. And then I believe that the commission requested that Condition Five include an additional permit compliance review of water, of the animal waste management plan and water quality measures, once a year for an additional two years. So, I would insert that in the portion of the monitoring that says, permit compliance staff shall visit the site at least twice per year for three years, and once a year for an additional two years to take photos and inspect site operations. It's toward the end of the monitoring section of Condition Five. And then Condition Seventeen, which is the construction hours, would be modified to insert unless the standard construction hours are revised by the county of Santa Barbara.
Okay. Okay. Aren't those conditions acceptable to the center and the second, or yes?
Yes. Those were the conditions I had in mind.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. Are there any further discussion? No further discussion, then, Mr. Villalobos? So, I have your call question.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney.
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia.
Aye.
Commissioner Blau.
Aye.
And Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. And there you have your project. And thank you all. And we'll have a five-minute break to set up for the next item, number five. Thank you.
The following is the hearing on the request of Tim Miller on behalf of AT&amp;T Mobility to consider case number 09CUP50, application filed on November 23, 2009, and to determine that the project is exempt pursuant to Section 15303 of the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Okay. Thank you. Ex parte and site visit disclosures, please. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes. I drove into Tucker's Grove yesterday. I didn't quite see the faux pine, but I was in the vicinity.
Okay. Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you. The same thing. You can't see it.
Commissioner Cooney.
This site is very familiar to me as I went through the process on the planning commission with the prior tree. Now that we're developing a grove, I probably won't go each time, but I haven't been out to see it recently.
Okay. I was there, and there's no tree because it hasn't been permitted yet, but I did see the old tree, the original tree, and the other antenna that's just a pole. So, I'll be interested to see what staff has to present. So, Ms. Lowry, if you will, please.
Thank you, commissioners. Good afternoon. My name is Megan Lowry. I'm the planner on the case before you, AT&amp;T at telecommunications facility at Tucker's Grove Park. As you know, the project is located at Tucker's Grove Park, which is a county-owned public park. It's approximately 19 acres in size and zoned recreational. The existing facilities on the property include, but are not limited to, picnic areas, park facilities, ranger's office, and two other existing telecommunications facility structures. Just to familiarize your commission with the park itself, over here, here's a view of the playground area and open grass area. On the right-hand side is bathroom. Directly straight on is the ranger's office, which is beyond the fence. Further beyond that is the faux tree that exists at the park now. Here's an up-close view of the ranger's park office and the adjacent existing equipment area for the telecommunications facilities. This is somewhat shielded by an existing fence that's beyond this view, but this is up-close, right in front of it. Here's a view along Cathedral Oaks Road. The right-hand side, you can see the existing sprint pole facility. And between the power pole and the palm tree is the existing monopine facility that houses both Verizon and Clearwire. Here's an area...
Can I just ask you a question about that, the construction of that? I've noticed that in this particular monopine, that on the western edge, it's not, doesn't have branches all the way to the top. It's just got its antennas with this material attached to it that makes it look green. Is that because of the co-location, or is that just because this is an older version of a monopine?
Commissioners, I'm not sure exactly the design you're describing.
Okay.
I know that the tree itself was designed to mimic a real tree, and that the branches were coming down further than they had in previous models that we had seen. There's a bare branch, I think, on the bottom to kind of mimic a bare branch on the tree.
No, this was at the very top.
Oh, very top.
There aren't branches that go all the way around the pole. On the west side, it's just, you can see the antennas, and they're got stuff stuck on them to kind of disguise them, but they're not branches. Normally, you see, you can see the antennas behind the branches, but this one, I mean, I was looking pretty carefully at it, but, yeah, anyway.
Okay.
Okay, you don't know. That's fine.
I think what you're referring to is the antenna, what they call antenna socks. So, in addition to the branches itself...
Okay, that's it.
So, there are branches that have the faux pine needles on them.
Right.
In addition to that, they put socks around the antennas themselves that also have pine needles to just kind of further disguise their visibility.
But aren't the new trees such that the antennas, there's branches that go out beyond the antennas?
Correct.
Okay. So, this one doesn't? Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Here's, to orient you a little bit, in this corner of the park, you can see the entrance as it crosses Turnpike Road and go into the park. To the right is, begins the long parking lot. If you go over to the left, there's the last picnic area and restroom facilities. The arrow indicates where the restroom facilities were. Here's where the playground is. And the park ranger's office is under the vegetation there. The existing pole facility is identified there. And existing faux pine trees there, it's not in this photo at this year. The proposal would be on the same access, fire access road. Proposed project is a telecommunications facility, as we stated. It would provide service for AT&amp;T Mobility along Cathedral Oaks Road, approximately a half-mile in either direction of the site. Here are some coverage maps provided by the applicant. This actually represents the current technology the AT&amp;T service uses. And you can see the blue is the hole in the service, the green is good coverage. This is with the proposed site, it would fill in that hole. Here's another coverage analysis using the upgraded technology that AT&amp;T is currently trying to upgrade all their sites. There's still a lack of, yellow is kind of a poor service, and purple, there's still lacking service with that type of technology, but the proposed project would also fill that in. Proposed tree would be 52 feet in height. It's a faux tree referred to as a monopine facility. It would include nine panel antennas, and then four support equipment cabinets would be placed in the existing equipment area. Also proposed would be an emergency generator that would not be stored on-site, be brought to the site in the event of a power emergency. There's an elevation view. This identifies the new faux tree and the four cabinets inside the equipment area. Here are photo simulations provided by the applicant. This is a view along Cathedral Oaks Road. So, you can see on the left-hand side would be the proposed monopine, and on the right is the existing monopine that exists today. Here's another photo simulation, is viewed through, inside the park by the playground area. The existing monopine on this case is on the left of the pine tree, of the real palm tree, and the proposed one would be towards the right. Another view from the intersection of Turnpike and Cathedral Oaks Road. You can see the existing proposed, along with other existing vegetation along the street. Some of the issue areas that we looked at as part of this project review, including zoning and land use compatibility. The land use development code allows telecommunications facilities in all zone districts, including recreational. However, the rec zoning areas do require a major conditional use permit be approved by your commission, which is one of the reasons this project is before you today. The proposed facility would not interfere with the current rec use of the properties decided outside of recreational areas, and outside of the existing ESH-mapped areas along the creek. Furthermore, it's also co-locating with existing facilities and sharing some other utility connections in the equipment compound area. Health and safety is always a concern of the public and community. Telecommunications projects are required to comply with FCC requirements, health and safety emissions requirements, at all times throughout the life of the facility. As part of the project review, we require the applicant submit an emissions test for radio frequency emissions, and it included a cumulative measurement of both the existing facilities there, in addition to the proposed facilities, antennas with this project. The cumulative emissions, the report concluded would be 1% of the FCC allowed limit, and therefore would comply well within the standards. The next issue area was aesthetics. As you're aware, the faux tree design is intended to blend with some of the existing landscaping and vegetation at the park itself. It'd also provide another, more vertical context for the existing facility, as you're seeing, providing more of a grove of trees effect.
Can I just ask you about the aesthetics? I noticed the existing one, the lower branches don't go down very far, they're up pretty high. And this one is going to be about the same?
As the plans show now, it looks similar, yes.
Okay. The plans, it's my understanding in reviewing these at other jurisdictions, that you don't really get a good idea of how they're designed, because they're sort of designed on the spot, the limbs are punched into the, into the pole on-site, and it's just sort of at the whim, if you will, of those people who are, who are putting it up. So, how does the BAR make a determination then if these are just really a representation? It doesn't really reflect what the pine is going to look like when it's established? Because these are really representations. It couldn't, it can't change. Because these are really representations, it couldn't, it can't change. They can't, they don't build to this particular specification.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, actually through the life of these monopine projects, we've become more stringent in our plan requirements, or at least BAR has, in wanting more detailed drawings when they get to final BAR of the design specifications. They are prefabricated facilities, so they have a design that already is manufactured and they're usually using a manufactured design, however-
What is prefabricated?
There, it's a facility that's already a stamp out of something, it already exists. It's a design that is always-
So is the tree brought forth in sections with the limbs already attached? And they're placed on-site? Because it's my understanding is limbs are put into the pole on-site.
Correct. They, it's put together like a puzzle piece, you are correct. And I have photos showing that, if you, if you guys want to know. There are holes already in the pole and they're essentially putting the branches in.
Right, so does the BAR go to that kind of detail so that they can see that the placement of the branches is irregular, or it's more like a pine tree, or the spacing of the branches? Do you get down to that kind of detail so that they have that understanding, that it just doesn't look like all the limbs are placed in a, in a regular format? Or are they irregular?
We, the conditions of approval require that they do have, not be actually symmetrical and have some rigid, different varied branches and colors and very, you know, green mixed with brown. Permit compliance goes out to the site once it's completed, and we can require some minor changes to kind of shift it. In one case of, one of the more recent pine trees we had, we had them taper a couple of the branches to kind of give it a more rigid look. So there are minor infield changes that we can make. We can also, you know, add detail to the conditions of approval or the plans that BAR reviews.
The color of the existing monopine is pretty good, I think it blends in. So does the BAR look at color boards, or they look at samples? What is it that they see so that you know that when you go out, that's what the BAR is seeing?
The BAR usually requests branch samples with the branch in-
Okay, so they get the color.
-faux pine.
Good, okay, thank you.
So as we just discussed, it does require BAR review, and although the project did go through conceptual review and get approval, on that level, they will be returning for both preliminary and then final review with the BAR. In addition to that, our conditions of approval do have specific design requirements, specifications, including color, branch design, antenna being hugged into the tree trunk rather than being extending beyond the branches. With that, staff, I'd like to make our recommendations, that your commission make the required findings for the project as specified in Attachment A of the staff report, including the SEQA findings. Determine the project is exempt pursuant to Section 15303 of the SEQA guidelines, and approve the project subject to the conditions as included in Attachment C. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Okay. Great, before I turn over to the applicant, we'll have Commissioner questions, and Commissioner Brooks.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to ask staff, we have the public notice, it's right out there on Cathedral Oaks, very easy to see, okay. Once this goes in, and as I was watching the children play on their structures, and, you know, I know for health and safety, you know, we are within the FCC guidelines, is there any requirement that, that the public is aware of the proximity of these facilities? I mean, do we have any obligation to do that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Brooks. No, there's no county, you know, federal requirement for the county notify the public. That's why the public standards for emissions exist. They are intended to protect the unknowing public.
Okay.
There are also standards for emissions for the workers that are within the facility and are aware of the emissions and the antennas, but the standard public limit is to protect those that are not aware of the facility itself.
Okay. And one other question, I haven't gone close enough to one of these structures. What are the fireproof materials? Could you explain something? Because that is in a very wooded area, you know, there's people around there. If there had, if there would be a fire, you know, and some of these trees go up, what would happen to the faux trees? I mean, they would just, explain that to me.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Brooks. It's my knowledge, well, there's different materials that the tree itself is made of. There's, you know, fiberglass, plastic, metal brackets, and then antennas themselves also, you know, are of transparent materials. The applicant might be able to provide you more detail what materials. In talking with fire department, they feel that fiberglass is more flammable, or a safety concern. We, I mean, they are placed outside of the trees, trying to be, within the trees for context. It's kind of a push and pull, we want it inside the tree area so that it provides context for the design, but at the same time, place it near, closer to the fire road so that hopefully it's not in proximity of a fire danger. It's kind of a complex issue in that sense, but I don't, the fire department does service the property, and so they could come and protect the tree, you know, the faux facility in the event of a fire. But the materials themselves are not fire retardant completely, no.
Okay, no other questions? Mr. Miller, our applicant, if you'd like to make a presentation.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair, Members of the Commission. Again, my name is Tim Miller. Appreciate the opportunity to present our project to you today. About, I think we sell a pretty good detail of what we are looking at here. I just wanted to address a couple of concerns that were brought up, or at least, at least go into the coverage maps and explain why AT&amp;T's here, especially the last two. I know we showed you two different kinds there. The ones that are labeled at the top, UMTS, and I know you all mentioned iPhone in between the break here, this is actually a reason for these facilities that are coming in, to supply the new technology that you have, the new applications to expect it with your iPhones. AT&amp;T's popularity has obviously grown since the iPhone was introduced, and you had to have the network to support it. And I guess to let you understand, the reason these maps are different to support those apps, I guess the easiest way to explain to me is if you're making a phone call or using your regular data on your, on your other phones, compared to your smartphones, you're talking about four times the difference in use. So whenever you're doing the internet, or there are people listening to their music, that's using four times the amount of capacity as your normal cellphone use. And that's why there's a difference in the maps, and we are trying to provide this coverage to the area. The other thing I wanted to hit was also, you know, the residents that they're making the comment, I have my, that's my only source of use for contact out there is my cellphone. This actually has been a very popular reason why we're coming into, especially the recession has sped it up. We were expecting to see this maybe a couple more years down the road, but I believe it was, the statistic end of last year was twenty-three percent of households are cellular phones only now. They've gotten rid of their landlines. So this is becoming a reality, and it's only going to grow from here. So that's another reason for this coverage. And not to go into too much about the ARB, but we have different designs that we do propose. I did show the ARB another design. And what we do is we, what I'm going, working with them on is the branch count. And like Megan was saying, that we do have different types, like three branches per foot, 2.5 branch per foot, and that's what we go off of. Now, what we'll, what we'll be discussing is, once we have that already cut out, you can't add additional branches. So we can go with the higher amount and then remove them from there. But otherwise, we got to go back and buy a whole new pole, and that's a lot of expense there, because you're talking about a thousand dollars a foot. So that's something we work on with, with the Architecture Review Board. Other than that, I know we've been here for a while, and I'll be here to answer any questions you have. I believe it's a good project, and here for you, available.
Thank you for the information about the number of branches per foot. And I guess is, it's also not, it's also, besides vertical, it's spacing as well, right? Or how is that? Is there sort of, they're done randomly, or?
Yeah, it is. I mean, I don't know exactly how they, they make it up, but it's supposed to be as more, as more, most, more realistic than, you know, the ones from twelve, thirteen years ago. So like I said, it's just a preference, and we have different pictures of the different designs. Like I said, it just depends from one jurisdiction to the next, whether they like the fuller, and some actually like the more along the lines of the two-foot per branch, all right, I'm sorry, two branches, two, two branches per foot count, because it gives you that more, what they call a California pine, because they're not just really full. They're, there's a lot of breakup and a lot of areas you can see through in on it.
Great, any, any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I usually have a lot of questions concerning the bearing of the sectors and the frequency, but Ms. Lowry did an outstanding job, and she's got it all in her report, so I have no questions. Good job, Megan.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes, thank you. I was reading an article in the newspaper last week, and I cut it out and brought it, and I was, and it is an AT&amp;T product that's now being offered. It's called Microcell. And we seem to be getting quite a few projects coming before us, faux trees, faux water tanks. And again, this is probably away from the project, but I have, I have concerns, you know, about some of these towers. And yet, here is a solution that AT&amp;T is coming up with. It's a hundred and fifty dollars for the product, and it offers households their own private, basically, cell tower. Could you explain that? And is this the wave of the future? Will we stop putting up faux trees? Or do you think that this is just for isolated cases?
This is, well, basically, sorry, basically it's coming around, this has been, it's actually been around for a little bit now. The difference is, is that I'm not too sure if the hundred and fifty dollars is just for the equipment alone, but there is a monthly service fee for that. And different providers have different amounts, but whenever you purchase a phone, you usually want it to work in your area. And so whenever you get it back to yourself, you get it back to your home, and you send it, you're trying to make it work, it doesn't work, it's like, well, here's another solution for it. Do you want to pay, I don't know if it's fifteen to twenty-five dollars extra a month, and for each household to have to do that, we still, still, oh, sorry, still stay competitive? They're more for instances where, I guess, more rural or hard-to-reach areas, if you're in a canyon area or something like that. And it is just for your house. It may go bleed a little bit out, but it's not really the way of the future. It's, this is still where you want to go, to provide a lot of service to the people at the same price that when they, they sign their contract, that they want that at, so it's isolated cases, more or less.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
Madam Chair, I almost never do this, but I have a, I have a question.
Good, please ask.
Because this came up at the Montecito Planning Commission, and I didn't have the opportunity to ask, but do these microcells operate independent of the rest of your system? Or do they supplement the rest of your system?
It's basically like hooking up a Wi-Fi to your computer. You're hooking this up to a line, a cable line, and it's just, it's just bringing it out, amplifying it for your house.
So it's separate?
I'm sorry?
It's separate from the rest of the?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. It's not, there's not enough there to interfere with the existing system.
Okay, so with that, I will turn to public comment. Are there any, no speaker slips? All right, then we're going to close the public hearing portion. Thank you, Mr. Miller. And bring it back for commission questions. Any further questions? Commissioner Valencia.
Just, just one question to Mr. Miller, I probably should have asked him, but with the new advents of applications, you know, apps, when the first iPhone came out, it had twenty-four apps or something, and you could ask the baseball scores, or the weather in China, or, you know, what the interest is. Now, there'll be so many applications on there, you'll be able to put fifty, a hundred applications. Will the, will the antennas be able to handle the new traffic? Because I think you had a queue with fifty, and then you set off to another cell site. So are the new antennas that you're putting in, being able to have that capacity?
That's what we're offering with, with the UMTS system. That is just to be able to handle the, the newer technology, the applications, the capacity. That's the reason for this. And that's where we're going with all the stuff. The existing sites, we are upgrading the cabinets, we are going there too. We're modifying those with the new equipment to be able to handle it as well.
So it'll be, it'll be increased speed, probably the kilobyte?
Yeah, that's, that's the reason your smartphones are having the slow ones. With this new technology, you'll be able to keep up. It's, it's crazy how slow we are compared to other countries. They go like, like, you know, us hopping out of laptops, that's how fast their, their phones work, and we're still way behind them. So we'll eventually catch up to them.
All right, thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions, and appears there are none, then, or other comments, Commissioner Cooney.
You didn't say comments before I have-
I know, I was just, I was seeing, I'd get away with it.
Well, I, first of all, I have to disclose that I oppose the, the existing monopine in Tucker's Grove on the basis that, from an aesthetic standpoint, I think the public seeks out places like Tucker's Grove because it, it is a beautiful, peaceful area. And, and to me, that means that, that people like to look at the natural vegetation. And, and we should, we should not alter our parks in such a way that it infringes on the, the view from the park of the, of the park's greatest assets, which are the trees and, and other vegetation. I, I don't think we've examined the impact of putting two trees together. Is that a positive, or is that a negative? Is it the case that we're increasing the impact on Tucker's Grove by putting in two trees over just having the one that is there now and is the current situation? I have to say, I'm, I'm very divided in my feelings about that. I look for help in the, in the SEQA regulations, and, you know, there is language that's, that's fairly good in terms of guidance. This is, Ms. Lowry has indicated that it's exempt, and she's done a, a nice analysis with her Notice of Exemption Attachment B, effectively saying that it's a categorical exemption as a new small structure. But you know, the exceptions to the exemptions which apply here are qualified by a particular provision referred to as cumulative impact. And it says, "All exemptions for these classes are inapplicable when the cumulative impact of successive projects of the same type in the same place over time is significant." And I, I read that several times to myself, and I guess the issue is, is number one, if you put the two monopines among the existing vegetation and look at it both from within and outside Tucker's Grove, is the impact visually significant? And to me, it is. But I think SEQA only takes that to the point of saying, okay, it's not exempt. And if you follow it through, then you would do a greater analysis under SEQA and come up with a negative declaration with mitigations. And, and then, the answer is, we've built in the mitigations that we would otherwise require in a negative declaration. I can't think of anything else that Ms. Lowry and the applicant haven't thought of that would make it better-looking. So in the end, I guess I have to decide whether it's just not acceptable from an aesthetic standpoint. And, and I certainly would be at least influenced by the views of my fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Blau.
I guess the question for me was, is there another place to put a cell service that would have less of a big impact and still work? And I'm going to have to rely upon the applicant to determine whether or not it is. If there was another place to put their cell site, and it looked far superior visually than what we have here, I would have to, I would have to speak to Commissioner Cooney. I don't think that's the case, and kind of like, I know we have to have cell service. Directly, us people can't do phone service, we can't do computer service without it. It is the way of the future, and we'll have to see that we're trying to-
At least imitate trees as opposed to put up the typical ugly power poles that you see with the, all the metal. So I, I don't know if that gives you any guidance or not.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Valencia? No, no, okay. Commissioner Brooks?
I didn't see the actual faux tree that's there now. And again, the proximity of this structure, I did go right in- And again, the proximity of this structure, I did go right into the parking area, though, of the park ranger, and I didn't realize that what I was looking at over to the left was actually the equipment, you know, the supportive equipment of this. I don't know. Perhaps if it was away from the children's section, you know, I, I think sometimes, you know, we're just, you know, as far as, you know, cumulative impacts, we'll look at the aesthetics. Okay, we have, you know, the one monopine, now we're going to have a second one, and then we have people under those that have cell phones, you know, parents have cell phones, the children have cell phones, probably, I don't know, it was just Pueblos High School, every senior was at the park when I was there the other day. And then I went all the way down to the other end of the park, but I guess just you wouldn't have the coverage that's necessary to fill in this, in the gap. I'm just, I just have concerns about putting these things in, you know, recreational, public areas. The irony is, you know, parents are taking their children there to play and to kind of interface with nature, and really what they're beginning to interface with is just more technology indirectly, you know.
And what I find interesting is, you go into parks, or, as I see people walking down my neighborhood where they should be out for their morning stroll, they're talking on their cellphone. But anyway, that's a whole nother issue. You know, what's interesting, as you travel west along Cathedral, excuse me, as you travel east along Cathedral Oaks, you see, if you're looking at, if you're looking for a monopine, you can find it. But if you're traveling west on Cathedral Oaks, you can't see the monopine at all, unless you hang your head outside and look in the back, but I couldn't see it. And even as you go into the compound, it's a little hard to see it because the, you sort of know it's there if you're, if you're looking for it. I do have to admit that for an early monopine, it's pretty good. It's, it's pretty well disguised, and I thought the, particularly the color was pretty good. And while I'm certainly not an expert, I have looked at this, on Design Review Board and other jurisdictions where we look at many of these same issues. So I'm very comforted by the language in the conditions where it's fairly detailed as to what is expected, and I, I thought that was good. It talks about foliage must vary in density, spacing, size, and angle to avoid rigid symmetry. Overall tree shape shall integrate with the context of the site. Colors of the faux trunk and branches must be field-matched, one with the existing vegetative backdrop. Non-reflective green needles shall be interspersed with brown to provide more natural appearance. Exterior surface of the faux trunk shall emulate the texture of a real tree. You know, I know this has been honed probably over many years, but I think it's a really, I think it's a really good description of how, what needs to be done to put this into the context. So, you know, while I'm, while I'm always concerned about the issues of the, of health and safety, you know, those have sort of been taken away from us. So it's really only about, for me, about aesthetics. So I think it's going to be okay here. I really do. I think that the county has done a very good job of looking at these monopines, particularly, it's going to be in a grove where you're, unless you're looking up and someone says, oh, you see those two monopines, you're not going to notice it. There's also that single monopole there, which I don't know, is that, I wonder if that was the original cell site? So that's been there quite a while then. Any idea how long that's been there?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I believe the Sprint facility went in in 2000 or 2003, and Verizon was 2005.
Okay. So it's been a while. Okay. Great. So I don't have any problems with supporting the project. Yeah, it's my district, so that's, that's sort of my comments, and Commissioner Cooney would just like to get some comments from you. I mean, I know you-
Well, I, I'm not sure I can support it, Madam Chair, but I did want to raise one other issue.
Okay.
First of all, I have to say that these reports that Ms. Lowry prepares for us are really getting to the excellence stage. She picks up on all these subtleties, and what's more important, she carries from one hearing to another issues that we raised at prior hearings. So for example, with respect to noise emissions from the generator, she now indicates that the, the emergency generator shall be shielded to P and D satisfaction to operate within the limit. So it, it isn't just left to a noise machine at the level, or at the, the boundaries, and the boundaries of this parcel are pretty big. They go around a, a long area, so I think there is going to be some shielding required, but she covers that. And so it comes right down to, is this an appropriate place for a monopine for a second facility? And I think to be consistent with my reasoning five years ago, I have to oppose this one on the same basis.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'm prepared to support this project. There was a letter that was very telling of why we're putting this project there. We're not putting in for the AT&amp;T, we're putting it in there for all the people who have all these dead zones, and this lady in this letter tells us that she, she's just waiting for the day that it's operational, and I hope that's soon.
Okay. Thank you. Well, Commissioner Cooney, I remember, as I said, that hearing back, it must have been, I'm not sure when it was, but I appreciated the Planning Commission vigorous discussion of, of putting this, the first monopine there, and particularly in a rec zone, and how that would affect recreational use. I mean, it was, I don't know, they must have spent hours just discussing that. And, you know, I, I think about that today when I'm there, and I see that it really hasn't made too much difference. I mean, people continue to go to the site, they enjoy Tucker's Grove, all sorts of activities go on there, people use their cell phones, people in the area, I think, are always, because as the applicant has pointed out, and as we well know, there is certainly more cellphone usage in the community. So as Commissioner Valencia has said, that people will appreciate having this additional cell site and the additional coverage. So while I'm always conflicted about these fake visual impediments in our landscape, they're sort of an ultimate reality, as Commissioner Blau said, you know, it's a wave of the future. And I, I believe that the county has done a very good job of trying to incorporate them into our visual landscape. So with that, I am going to support the project and make the, my motion is going to be that the commission make the required findings for the project, specify in Attachment A of the staff report, including the CEQA findings, determine the project is exempt pursuant to Section 15303 of CEQA Guidelines, Attachment B, and approve the project subject to the conditions included as Attachment C. If I can have a second.
Second.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any further discussion? No further discussion? Okay. Mr. Villalobos, would you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Brooks?
No.
Commissioner Cooney?
No.
Commissioner Valencia?
Yes.
Commissioner Blau?
Yes.
And Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Motion passes three to two.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And I think we have one last item before we go. Ms. Black, if you'd like to-
Madam Chair, if we could go back to the projection report, and two, two things on the projection report. First of all, I'd like the commission to cancel your meeting of, I've lost my place, June 16th. We had not yet canceled that meeting, so if we could make a motion to cancel that meeting, that would be great.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then, Madam Chair, the other issue is trying to find a date that works for all concerned for the Los Alamos Community Plan. And we had that item on July 14th, and I've noticed that Commissioner Blau is planning to be absent that day. Is that still the case, Commissioner Blau?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So assuming that Commissioner Blau would like to participate in that hearing, and we typically try to have full commission for community plans, and we will need to, we'll need to push that an entire month. We just can't find another date that both the hearing room in Santa Maria and the commission is available. So that would be-
Do you have a July 1st first?
No. So that would be August 11th? Yes. Okay. Okay. Yep. Okay. And then, Madam Chair, I, I have to make a comment, and then I'm going to run out of this room, because I don't think it's going to make some of your, the commissioners very happy, but at the end of this fiscal year, we're not going to be able to reimburse the commission for lunch anymore. So I just wanted you to know that. It's, it's been a treat, an unexpected treat. And when we bring it in, we will obviously provide that for you when we have a very cramped day, but otherwise, we won't be able to, so I just wanted to let you know. I think that's, I think our, okay.
By lunch, you're not referring to chips, are you?
No, you get chips, you'll get sodas.
First things first.
Your lunch is fine. You're fine.
Actually, I was a little surprised you didn't even get paid for that.
Yeah, thank you. Exactly. Okay. Great. All right. Well, thank you. And with that, we conclude our hearing for today. And we will reconvene at our special meeting on June 30th. Correct. In Santa Maria. At the end of the month. Right. In Santa Maria.
Any mileage or any?
Everything else, Commissioner Valencia will continue to reimburse you for, it's just lunch. Right. So you get mileage and, just no lunch.
Still on?
But mileage, yes. Yeah. Yeah.
Still on?
Yes. Yes. Yep.
Just wanted to let you know, I really apologize, but this morning, that I think what happened was, Saturday I had a little chest pain-
Uh-oh.
-with the hospital Monday, and they did three more stents in my heart, so I was planning on still being at Santa Barbara yesterday, but when they put the stents in, they kept me overnight, which I hate, by the way.
Well, we're glad that you could be with us today. Thank you. Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Great. We'll see you all on the 30th.
Talk to y'all later.
Thank you. Okay. Bye-bye.[1753.53]